So do you want to, want to? Oops.
How about you, anything we say? We can say things.
How are you? Good. Good afternoon, everyone. It's 1:30 or so. We'll call to order, how do you turn that volume down? We'll call to order the November 20th special meeting of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Manager and Agency Board of Directors. Ask everyone to please rise. Glenn, why don't you lead us in the flag?
Let me begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chair West?
Yes.
Director Aronio.
Here.
Director Craven?
Here.
Director Borchardt?
Here.
Agenda review?
Mr. Chair, we're going to ask that item four be postponed to the next regular meeting. As it turns out, we didn't get enough public notice. We didn't get the required 10 days, only nine. As a result of canceling the meeting at the last minute, it took the paper some time to get the article ran, so we'll still meet all of our deadlines.
All right. Just by way of the roll call, I failed to notice Andy Waters, alternate Andy Waters, and Mike Mosley's in the back as well. I don't see any others. This is now time for public comment, an opportunity for public to address the board on any matter not otherwise on today's agenda. If you want to address the board, please step forward, identify yourself, and be heard. All right, we'll move on then to board member comments. Robert?
Yes.
Steve?
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Was up here and down there.
How about a congratulations to Ms. Craven for being reelected again?
Thank you.
Congratulations. All the other incumbents had challenges, so congratulations.
Yeah, I just have one. With respect to so many of the things that we have and will talk about involving Sigma and allocation plans, I'm sure it's no surprise, I read every letter that comes into the board, return every phone call from every stakeholder, and make time to meet with everybody who asks. And in that process, I've become increasingly concerned about the level of division and consternation among different groups, each of them, you know, filled with rectitude about the correctness of their particular claim or position. But I'm concerned, as we get in the weeds, which we must with respect to these transactional items, that we're losing perspective. We have a big, much bigger than these allocation plans and Sigma, big challenges confronting us. And most of the arguments that I hear sound to me like nothing but how to arrange, an argument over how to arrange the deck chairs on the Titanic, without anybody paying attention to the iceberg in front of us. You know, what we're down, we're far enough down in the Sigma process to know that the sustainable yield of the basin, particularly in the Oxnard Pleasant Valley area, the sustainable yield is not large enough, nearly large enough, sustaining the demands. And it's a real existential threat to the agricultural industry. We have to solve that. I don't care what anybody's been promised, despite all the talk, no adjudication solves that. An adjudication might tell you whether you're sitting in the aft section of the Titanic or the stern of the Titanic, but it is not going to solve the problem of that iceberg. We need to do that. And my only concern is, and the reason I bring this up, is that, you know, while we work through the transactional issues, the more important job ahead of us is the transformational issue, how we transform water supply, you know, in this county so that the allocation issues we wrestle with today are no longer a problem for anybody tomorrow. That's a big challenge. It's going to take big solutions, and it's going to take everybody in this community working together to accomplish that solution. I'm just concerned that if we allow everybody to retreat to their own corners and we sow those divisions so deep, that we'll miss the opportunity, the imperative, to come together to create the big solutions that we need tomorrow. You know, this is a, you know, it's going to take a community of effort. The people I've worked with since I've been on this board have, at times, exhausted but usually entertained and encouraged me with the depth of understanding, the knowledge, and the commitment. I just don't want to see that get lost as we wrestle over the details of some of the plans that we have to work on. Thank you. Now we'll move on then to the consent agenda, unless there's something a board member wants to pull off. Chair lets in a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll move then to item number five. Since we've taken four off.
Good afternoon, Chair West, members of the board. For the record, I'm Kim Loeb, Fox Canyon GMA staff. And DUDAC, Dr. Weinberger will be presenting this item, but before she comes up to discuss the status and give you the update on the GSP, I did want to talk to your board a bit about where we're at in the schedule and some concerns that we have in that regard. So your board approved the current scope of work, budget, and schedule at the June 20th meeting, and the schedule of milestones, a little loud here, back away, the schedule of milestones in that scope of work was for the groundwater modeling to be conducted from July through November this year. Draft GSPs to be to your board at the February meeting, and then the final GSPs to your board on the July 24th meeting. Subsequent to that, both CAGUS and United required agreements with the agency to conduct the modeling. Obviously, CAGUS doing it for East Los Poses and United for the West Los Poses PV and Oxnard Basins. The model, let's see, the board approved the model agreements, worked on them, the councils with those agencies, and our council worked on those, and your board approved them on September 14th, and they were executed on the 26th, both of them. And the modeling agreements were a good idea, however, they delayed to start the modeling by nearly three months. CAGUS and its consultant Antara, United, and DUDAC have been very busy doing modeling. There's been a lot of work being done since those agreements were signed, but there are challenges working with the multiple agencies to conduct the modeling. And for both these models, these are the first serious predictive model runs for both of them. They're still, you know, the new models are calibrated, but these are the first predictive runs. And there's complexities that had to be worked out to model future pumping, for expanding existing projects, and sorting out the field following, which was a proposed project, where we ran into problems with contracted water deliveries in that area, and there are a lot of, lot of details to work out in that regard. United's model is particularly complex, and they've developed a surface water model that they linked to that to feed in the projected San Clara River water deliveries into the future, into the groundwater model. And we had hoped today to have preliminary modeling results for the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley and West Los Poses basins from the United model. Results, we learned last, late yesterday from United, that we should discard the most recent results because they're still, they're still integrating that surface water into the groundwater model. So here we are at the ending, coming to the end of November, when the current schedule planned to be finished with modeling, but we don't have our base case modeling completed yet. So the purpose of my remarks is just to inform your board that we are concerned about the schedule. We're bunching up here towards the end of the year, and having the draft GSPs ready with the current state of the modeling is, appears very challenging. We'll keep your board advised as to the status. I think the modeling is going well now. It just, it just took a while to get the momentum going. There was a lot of work to do, and for those reasons. And so, once we get a little bit further into the modeling, I think that we and DUDAC and our modeling partners, CAGUS and United, can, we can let you know how that might affect the schedule. If there's no questions on that, then I'll ask Jill to come up and present her update.
Good afternoon. It seems with the volume today that I might actually finally be short enough to just leave these microphones right where they are. My name is Jill Weinberger. I'm here with DUDAC. And as Kim said, I'm going to be presenting the update on the GSP, both on groundwater quality, which is an issue we talked to you about, I believe, at the end of August, and the groundwater quality approach, particularly for the East Los Poses Basin and the Los Poses Basin in general, and then also talking about the modeling results we do have and where we are in the process, so you get a better understanding of how that's going. The reason that we are really focusing on these two topics today is that this is where we are in the GSP development process as far as coming up with minimum thresholds and measurable objectives, coming up with these sustainable management criteria that are how the basins will be managed moving forward. And so we need to develop those, is it too quiet?
Yeah, I think it's.
All right. So, so we need to develop those sustainable management criteria for, for water quality, and we will use the simulations, the model simulations, to develop those sustainable management criteria for the groundwater elevations at the basins. So if we start with water quality, you have seen us struggle with addressing water quality over time in these basins, and, and I will just preface this entire presentation by saying we're not alone, and this GSA is not alone in struggling with how to address this. And that is really because water quality is unique among the six sustainability indicators in how it ties with groundwater production. So those sustainability indicators, groundwater elevations, change in storage, the depletion of interconnected surface water subsidence, seawater intrusion, those are all directly tied to groundwater production, they're directly tied to each other, they're easily tied to groundwater elevation. Groundwater quality is a little bit different. Because groundwater quality is a little bit different, I think even DWR has struggled a bit with how to address it. They have yet to come out with a specific guidance for addressing water quality in, in a GSP. And as a result of that, Jeff and Glenn actually went to meet specifically with DWR in Sacramento to say, we're wrestling with these topics, we really need to understand what your perspective is to help us with the GSP process. And the feedback that they got from that meeting was that DWR understands that for the initial GSPs, these ones that are going in in 2020, or for the other basins, the ones that would go in later, that they don't necessarily expect to have specific sustainable management criteria for water quality, because they understand that there's still a bit of work to be done in a number of basins to identify the magnitude of the problem, the source of the problem, how it can be addressed, and that there are additional studies that really would need to be done for boards such as yours and for stakeholders to understand what they would be signing up for if they set specific sustainable management criteria. So if you don't include those specific criteria that I'm just talking about for water quality here, so if you don't adopt them in this initial GSP for water quality, your GSP has to do a couple of things. It's got to document the water quality issues. We've done that, we've been working through all the comments we received, we can beef up that documentation and improve it a little bit, but we've, we've got a good basis of what the concerns are. We have to have an adequate monitoring program. That's also been established, and again, with some, some changes based on feedback, but we've got a, a good monitoring program in place. And the last piece, and the piece that I think was missing in the preliminary draft, is to begin to form a plan of how you would set sustainable management criteria moving forward. So based on the feedback we got with DWR, and, and like I said, you've seen us wrestling with this, but based on this feedback, we think it is prudent to adopt the DWR recommendations, meaning let's wait on coming up with specific measurable objectives, meaning measurable objectives and minimum thresholds for water quality. And what I mean by waiting on that is don't adopt concentration minimum thresholds and measurable objectives for water quality in this initial set of GSPs that will go to DWR. I think that's prudent because I think that this discussion took away our primary concern with the preliminary draft approach. This is more or less going back to the preliminary draft approach. And our primary concern is that DWR would come back and say, you know, we can't accept this, at least this part of the GSP because you haven't adopted these. So DWR has given us direction that they understand we might not be able to do it for this go-around. They're not going to reject plans based on that for this go-around. So the, the proposed approach is to follow that DWR guidance. We will, and we have documented the historical and existing water quality conditions in the basin, identify the appropriate monitoring program, and then we'll also present that path. Should it become clear that we need to adopt these, we can present a path to develop the specific measurable objectives and minimum thresholds related to groundwater quality concentrations. In order to do that, in order to come up with that path, we'll need to have a review of the groundwater quality data collected as part of this monitoring program, and there will be additional technical studies needed to look at what is the timeframe, a reasonable timeframe that we could expect for improving groundwater quality in these basins? What are the technologic, what, what technologies are available to us to do that? What would that cost? Those kinds of studies could be done. It would provide you with a better foundation on which to make management decisions, and it would also allow for stakeholder feedback on those management decisions. So that's where we've landed currently with water quality, is, is to go back and not adopt specific concentration measurable objectives and minimum, minimum thresholds at this time, but to instead lay out what DWR has requested, and including a path forward of how those could be adopted in the future. So I'm happy to take questions on that now, or I'm also happy to move on to modeling. I promised Kim I would try to keep this short.
You, you asked for feedback?
Yeah.
About how we, thoughts we might have about that, and of course, it's, there's a lot of technical, there are many technical issues that have to be resolved in terms of that. But from, just from the standpoint of big issues, saltwater, seawater intrusion certainly strikes me as something we have to have a very vigorous monitoring program for, and we have to have a goal of, of stopping it. I think anything short of that, I think this agency was formed more than 20 years ago to stop saltwater intrusion. And it's, I now hear people sort of saying, oh, let's give up on that. And the idea that we would permanently contaminate one of the, you know, one of the real resources we have, which is a freshwater aquifer underneath the Oxnard Plain, I think is not what the general public wants, and it's not good government for us to do that. So the feedback I would have is that's one that I would want us to, to be very cautious about making any compromises on, and, and be very vigorous about monitoring and stuff.
No, I appreciate that feedback, and, and that reminds me that I probably should have been clear at the beginning, that DWR and Sigma actually separate seawater intrusion from other groundwater quality. So when I'm referring to groundwater quality here, I'm talking about not seawater intrusion, groundwater quality concerns. And so the, the modeling actually for the Oxnard Pleasant Valley and West Los Poses Basins is, and the, and the groundwater levels that we will set to stop seawater intrusion, that's where, where that seawater intrusion component is coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. So moving on to the, the modeling, unfortunately, I think Kim, Kim alluded to it, I shouldn't say unfortunately, in this case, I was going to rephrase my sentence, so let me, let me start, let me start again. Kim alluded to the hard work that United and CAGUS have been doing, and their, and CAGUS's consultant Antara have been doing on these models. They have, they've really been working a lot, they have been working well with us. We really appreciate their availability, and they're, they're constantly answering the phone and answering emails and getting these details hammered out. There are a lot of details to get hammered out in these models, and, and I, we just really appreciate having the opportunity to work with them on that, to get the modeling done. As Kim said, United, we don't have modeling results for the United model, and that's where I was going with the unfortunately, so we can't discuss specifically those water level thresholds to look at seawater intrusion at this meeting. We are anticipating getting those soon, and we will be bringing those to you when, when we have them and have had a chance to, to go over them and do the analysis we need to do before we can, can bring them here. So primarily in the following slides, I'm going to be focusing on the Los Poses results, and that's just now for the East Los Poses Basin, because the East Los Poses management area is, is really distinct and separated by a fault from the West Los Poses management area. So West Los Poses is part of that Oxnard and PV model. So we do have models, and by we, I'm really saying United and CAGUS have models prepared for all of the basins that we're talking about. We have been working with TAG to get approval on some of the inputs and, and the modeling parameters that are going into these baseline models, looking at what timeframe, historical timeframe to pick up and then use moving forward, looking at whether or not to incorporate land use changes, and those kinds of things. What we haven't had a chance to run past TAG, and we anticipate doing in the next meeting, depending on when these results come in, is to start looking at, at the results, particularly of the Oxnard Pleasant Valley and, and West Los Poses Basin, looking at the results of that model, and looking, then getting back to things like the water budget and how that would impact our discussions of future sustainable yield. So those will be going to TAG soon, but they haven't gone through TAG yet, and we're not presenting them here yet either. What we will be looking at today are groundwater elevations in East Los Poses for a couple of different wells, looking at different aquifers in East Los Poses. We're looking at actually four different model runs. So we, we've done a future baseline run. The future baseline run has a few key parameters, and these are, these were kept across all of the model, both of the models. Those parameters are, we incorporated the climate change factors that were provided by DWR, we addressed changes in stream flow for future climates that were also provided by DWR. We assumed a constant pumping rate of the 2015 to 2017 average pumping. That is an assumption. It is very clearly an assumption, but that is our assumption for these future baselines to see what the water levels would do if we maintained that average pumping rate. And then we also incorporated projects that have been through the regulatory approval process and are funded and are planned to start. So these are separate from the projects that went to the board. These are ones that are already much farther along but haven't necessarily started today. So that's all in the future baseline. The next set of model runs that we did was actually to incorporate those projects that did go to the board and were approved by the board for analysis in the GSP, and I want to be clear that that is not a guarantee that these projects will happen or that they have to happen. It doesn't commit you to anything, it's just approved, they were far enough along to be investigated to see their potential impacts on the sustainable yield moving forward. So that's the projects run. And then in East Los Poses, we also did two more runs, because the projects run kept that 2015 to 2017 baseline pumping. So then we did two additional runs where we looked at reduced pumping moving into the future. So we'll take a look at those. And I'm going to start with a well that's in the Eppworth Gravel. So keep in mind, this is its own separate aquifer, it's distinct from the Fox Canyon, it's separated from a Royal Los Poses, it's this well up here in the northern part of the basin. The light blue here is the historical water level record for that well. And what you can't see in this well, in this hydrograph, is that there are actually two lines that follow the gray here. So the gray line is both the projects run and, in fact, that future baseline run. They plot right on top of each other, which says the projects don't impact the Eppworth Gravels. Well, that's not really surprising because the projects in East Los Poses are really targeted at recharge along a Royal Los Poses, and the Eppworth Gravels is distinct from that. So we wouldn't anticipate that the projects would, would impact water levels in this, in this particular aquifer. So what we do see then are these orange and purple lines have reductions in groundwater production, and they have two different reductions for the Eppworth Gravels. The orange has a 15% reduction, and the purple has a 10% reduction. So, and that is relative, I got to say over and over again, that's relative to the average 2015 to 2017 groundwater production rate from those wells, in the, in the Eppworth Gravels. So what this would say to us when we're looking at coming up to identifying measurable objectives and minimum thresholds is you got to have groundwater elevations that are not chronically declining. That is a specific factor in Sigma. Chronic declines in groundwater elevation is a negative result, it's, it's an impact to the basin. So maintaining 2015 to 2017 production into the future does have chronic declines in groundwater elevation for the Eppworth Gravels. A reduction of 10%, that purple line, it flattens out, although, you know, based on climate, you do end up having another decline towards the end of the record, whereas a reduction of 15% from that 2015 to 2017 pumping rate, you actually see a recovery in water levels. So where we're going with this, let me, let me get to where we're going, and then I'm happy to take questions on each of these. Where we're going with this is now starting to set, where are our measurable objectives, which is that elevation at which we think the basin might be ideally managed, factoring in that we may have times where the water levels go below that, so we need to set a bottom, and that's, that bottom would be the minimum threshold. So... So based on this, we would see that within 20 years, and I think that was the other factor, I forgot to tell you, we got to get to sustainability, we got to get these to level out within 20 years. So within 20 years, you're probably looking at a measurable objective somewhere in that, you know, 590, 600 feet mean sea level range, and a minimum threshold that may be 20 to 40 feet below that to allow for some operational flexibility, but again allowing for recovery when you can get it. You think, sorry Director Bennett, did you have a question on this one?
Yeah, I just, you have the purple line without projects and the yellow line with projects, so you really have two variables.
Well, so yeah, so we do, and that's a very good point. We do have two variables, but in the Eppworth, because projects don't impact it, you're really only looking at the change in pumping. And we know that the projects don't impact it because that gray line sits right on top of the baseline. So there's no project that you can, that has yet been proposed that would impact water levels in the Eppworth.
Okay, so you still have 25% reduction.
That 25%, and I should also say, the Eppworth is not directly sitting on top of the Fox Canyon, there's a fair amount of aqua tard between the Eppworth and the Fox Canyon. So the 25% reduction in the Fox Canyon and the Grimes versus the 10% reduction in the Fox Canyon and the Grimes, because this has a higher pumping rate in the Fox Canyon and the Grimes than the purple, both are still lower than the baseline, but the yellow is higher than the purple, what we're really seeing, we're still seeing recovery in that yellow-orange. And that recovery is because there's actually a lower pumping rate in the Eppworth.
I just don't understand why you wouldn't have run one where you had the exact same pumping levels without project and with project, so you could see the benefits of the project.
Well, we will get to that, and hopefully you'll actually see this one in the next slide, where we're talking, where projects do influence.
Okay, thank you.
The water levels. And actually, I'm going to even jump past this slide, because it's not very clear. In the following slide, I promise you, you will see where projects come in and influence water levels. This well is in the Upper San Pedro, that's that aqua tard, it's not so much, it's not a complete aqua tard, but it's a, it separates the Eppworth, it also separates the shallow aquifer from the underlying Fox Canyon, and it in fact is a source of water to the underlying Fox Canyon aquifer as it drains. In this particular well, we actually don't see a lot of variability in the future. I don't have historical water levels, so this is just the modeled water levels starting in what should be year 2020, and then at 10-year intervals going 50 years into the future. You see a decline here, a larger change, I guess, in the baseline than you do with the projects. So now we do have some separation between the baseline and the project, and then the impacts of reduced pumping on top of that. This well, again, as far as, it's already relatively horizontal, right? We don't have to get there in 20 years. So you're looking at setting a measurable objective somewhere around 380, 390, and then allowing for some flexibility and having a lower minimum threshold. But let's start getting to some more interesting wells here, where now we're seeing a couple of things. We're seeing, first of all, here's the historical, this is also an Upper San Pedro well, so this is the historical water level. We've seen a long-term decline in the groundwater elevation in this well. We're seeing a separation between the historical endpoint and the modeled beginning point. So we have some error in the model, some uncertainty in the model that has to be accounted for when we're setting measurable objectives and minimum thresholds. In this particular case, we would suggest just literally shifting all of the water levels after that starting point down to the measured most recent groundwater elevation. You don't want to start with your model up too high, because then you've biased the whole thing too high. You do see a separation here. This is the well here. Again, projects are really focused on getting recharge along the Royal Los Poses, this is this well. You've got, with the 2015 to 2017 baseline, you've got long-term declines. You have less of a decline when you're talking about the, with the projects maintaining that 2015 to 2017 baseline. With the projects and now on top of it, a 10% reduction in pumping, you come to this orange line, or if you don't do the projects, but you have a 25% reduction in pumping, you come to kind of a similar spot. So this is where we're getting at, that question of what do the projects do, right? That you'd need, if you don't do any of the projects, you'd need a 25% reduction in pumping to get you to the same point that you would do with a 10% reduction in pumping and the Actually, this well, so there's one other thing I need to point out. You've seen it, none of these level out at any point in this well. We don't have a record that the model can use to say, when does this level out? So there are going to be questions of how to manage the basin as a whole, and whether or not having water levels at this one point not level out is significant and unreasonable for the entire basin, right? Or whether we can set our minimum thresholds and measurable objectives in a way to allow declines in this well as long as the rest of the wells are leveling out. So here now, we're in the meat of it, we're in the Fox Canyon. This well over here, again, the Arroyo is down here, and we see the baseline in the blue, the baseline with projects is in the gray. If we don't do the projects, but we have a 25% reduction in groundwater production relative to the 2015 to 2017, this is the purple, and if you do both the projects and a 10% reduction, now you get the orange. And from this, we can start to say, all right, well, again, within the resolution of what we have to work with, maybe we're setting our measurable objective in that 230 to 250 range and allowing for a minimum threshold closer to that 170 to 190 range. This is another Fox Canyon well. This is actually at the same location as that Upper San Pedro well that had the chronic declines one, two slides ago. So this is the same location, it's a nested monitoring well. You see, again, here's that shift in the water level relative to the historical water level. Here's the baseline, here's the projects, and here's where you end up with either your 10% reduction with projects or your 25% reduction without projects. And we're really just looking to get water levels that stop chronically declining after 20 years into the simulation. So we're landing in this purple and orange range based on what we're seeing in the Fox Canyon aquifer. Again, before we set these specific ones, we'd have to apply that shift to these water levels. And then the last one, I promise for today, is in the same location, again, same location, nested well, so it's deeper in the formation, looking in the Grimes now. You see the same shift between the historical and the simulated, and again, you've got chronic declines, this really keeps going down with the projects, and these level out within 20 years or so. And so we'd be looking at similar measurable objectives and minimum thresholds in this well. So that's what we have right now. That's where we're going, is looking at how to set these measurable objectives and minimum thresholds, getting water levels leveling out within 20 years, and then also beginning to look at what the impacts would be to well screens or other potential impacts to beneficial uses and users in the basin. But the next steps, we got to actually finish modeling runs for Oxnard, West Los Poses, and PV. When we have those at a point that we're prepared to share, hopefully within the next week, we'll be bringing those to TAG. We're going to, we need to finish the sensitivity analysis for the East Los Poses management area, looking, again, that's another factor in getting to the uncertainty. So we've seen some of these shifts that add to the uncertainty, the sensitivity analysis will also give us a sense of the uncertainty. We need to finish the peer review, that's on DUE Deck. As far as the sustainable management criteria, we anticipate coming to you very soon with these revisited minimum thresholds, excuse me, and measurable objectives for East Los Poses, West Los Poses, and PV. We don't anticipate, although we will certainly review the minimum thresholds for Oxnard, we don't anticipate large changes in those or much of a change in those, because those are really driven by seawater intrusion. And then we need to get to the business of working out the last bits of the draft GSP. So we've been incorporating comments as they came in several months ago now. Now we need to get to incorporating the model results, and then the changes in the sustainable management criteria. And as Kim mentioned, right now, this is due to the board and the current schedule on February 27th, and we'll be updating you with how, any changes to that coming up. That's what I have for today.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just for staff, I'd like to ask about the February 27th. Could you refresh our memory in terms of, you know, we were trying to make it for January? And then at our last meeting, the discussion was, well, maybe we should push it to February. What do we lose by going to February instead of January?
Well, Director Bennett, the February date was set in June with the updated scope of work and schedule and budget. So I think, you know, we are, what we, we have to have this done and submitted to DWR no later than the end of January in 2020. That's our absolute deadline. So we have a little bit of buffer in time there before that date. I have to come to the July meeting with the final GSP ready for adoption. So basically what we're doing is cutting into the buffer we have ahead of that.
Done, thank you.
Time, yep.
Any questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public on this item? This is a receive and file and provide direction. I guess, first Jill, with respect to the approach on groundwater quality, I concur. I don't think we need to go create the wheel at this point, since we don't know how, and we may as well take advantage of the latitude that DWR has given us. So I think that approach is a prudent one. Anybody feel differently than that? And also, then with respect to the modeling, you know, I really, a lot's riding on the modeling, that's pretty obvious. And, you know, it's really important to me that TAG get to see all those water budget components and the various elements that go into basin storage calculations. And I trust that's what you're going to get to them, because that's what they need to advise us. Okay? Any other questions or comments then?
We have received five.
On second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Moving on then to item number six. Item number six, yes.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, Kim Lo, Fox Canyon staff. And so today we have for you a first reading of a revised ordinance for new allocation system for the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley basins. And so this is, was going to come to you on the 9th, but of course, we had to delay the meeting because of the tragic fires. But we're here today. And just to take a look at our calendar again, we're here on the 20th. We're going to ask your board to bring this back on the 5th here for a second reading and adoption. That's our regularly scheduled December meeting. And I just want to point out, there's not a lot of time between, that's two weeks away and we generally try and get the agenda package to print on the Wednesday before, and we've got the Thanksgiving holiday here at the end of the week. So depending on what your board decides to direct here, that's the schedule we're looking at in terms of getting this to you on the 5th.
Kim, interruption. I have in my calendar, we got a special meeting on the 30th of November as well, is that correct?
No, Director Board Chair, originally we had a special, a meeting on the 30th, and this is the meeting that got rescheduled instead of the 30th because not everybody was available. So we had, we were, we're having a challenge finding a meeting date here at the end of November, and today's the day we landed on. So that, there is not one on the 30th.
Thank you.
So before we get into the ordinance itself, we thought it would be helpful just to kind of have a very brief review of how we got to where we are. I think there's, it's been a long slog for sure, and I think there's sort of varying memories of exactly how we got here over the past. And so your board really first directed that we needed to move forward with the new allocation ordinance in October 2015, a little over three years ago, and directed that it would be good to have the stakeholders work out proposals to, for a new allocation system. And over 2016, there was a lot of work that was done for OPV. The agency initially worked to charter an OPV group as a sanctioned GMA group, like the LPUG worked on the Los Poses. They elected not to do that, they elected to move ahead on their own to develop that. But we continued, they continued to give us updates on their progress. And in January of 2017, your board expressed concern that the progress was, we weren't getting very far in the progress, concerned that it might impact the GSP schedule, and directed staff to work on development of an interim allocation system should the stakeholder develop allocation system not come to fruition. In November, staff came to your board, we gave regular updates through the year, but a year ago, we came and presented interim allocation system that we developed over the year with regular meetings with the OPV stakeholders, both representatives from both the AG and MNI groups. Your board gave us some direction. On tweaks to that, we came back on January, and your board directed that we move forward with an ordinance to implement that interim allocation system effective October 1st. Then in March, the OPV AG group submitted a draft white paper for some somewhat different allocation system. There were some differences that were significant. And we updated your board on those differences, and in June, your board said, well, we're not going to make the October date, so we'll move for a January 1st implementation. Then in July, of course, on the 25th, your board had a full day of OPV allocation with a workshop in the morning, an opportunity for the presentation by the OPV AG stakeholders and others, and then a meeting in the afternoon to direct staff on how to move forward with developing the ordinance. We had regular updates on your August, September, and a special board meeting in October, and then on the 24th, we had the first reading of the draft ordinance. And then your board directed us to make modifications and come back originally to the 9th, but then pushed till today. And in terms of the OPV AG white paper, the major points of that were that there'd be groundwater allocation pools, split 60% agriculture and 40% groundwater allocation pools, split 60% agriculture and 40% MNI, including allocation for pumping against future deliveries of pumping trough pipeline and Pleasant Valley system deliveries. There was no other water. I've heard comments saying that maybe there was other all water sources in the OPV Ag, I mean, yeah, OPV Ag white paper, but there wasn't specifically identified those two. Same as what our allocation system that your board's considering today has, assigning the allocation of land, your board has indicated that it intends to move that way deliberately. And then they proposed the initial allocation based on the highest year pumping of the 2015, 16, 17. That didn't work for your board. Proposed a hybrid method of allocation reduction, and also proposed a concept for borrowing and carryover flexibility. So that brings us to the 24th meeting. And at that meeting, your board directed us to consider an alternative approach to what we were looking at with the ordinance, draft ordinance that we had presented that day, and had directed us to move away from the idea of separate allocation pools, but base the allocation instead just at the wellhead, just like the GMA allocations have been for the decades leading up to ordinance E. And they would be based on the base period of extractions from 2005 to 2014. Said assign San Clara River allocations or the ability to extract, which is really not allocating that water, but it's the ability to pump to the average expected delivery for, based on the average deliveries during that base period, pumping trough pipeline for United, and Pleasant Valley Pipeline for Pleasant Valley County Water District. That would be reduce that allocation similarly to the groundwater, proportionally to whatever groundwater extraction allocation your board decided to implement based on the sustainable yield, identification of sustainable yield of the basins through the modeling, the GSP. And your board also heard a history of the Canal Creek project and agreed with staff's recommendation to continue that project through project resolution, but not part of the allocation ordinance.
Can I ask one quick question? The Santa Clara River, what I don't see there is, it also would be adjusted based on the five-year running average of what we, what actually happened, the actuals. Is that correct?
Well, we'll get into that more, Director Bennett, but as it presently sits and as we understood your direction from the October 24th meeting, there's not that specified five-year true-up on those with the running average. That's not how this simplified method was projected. We've had a lot of comments about that. We'll talk about that further.
So will you later talk about what will we do then if we don't have a five-year true-up? What will we do if the Santa Clara River numbers are significantly lower than what United has projected?
Right, that is an important issue for your board to address today and give us direction on how we need to move forward with.
In your presentation, if you could refresh us as to either why or do you understand our logic, why we decided not to do the five-year true-up? It's, I'm, I don't, I don't have that captured in my memory banks, why we decided not to do the five-year true-up. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move into the ordinance itself. It's slightly different than what was in the November 9th board packet. We've made a lot of clarifications. We had a lot of good stakeholder feedback from that board package, so we've made some changes, mostly clarifications, a few more substantive, which I'll point out and which are pointed out in the staff report. In terms of the general provisions in the ordinance, it replaces the allocation portion of a more ordinance E for Oxnard Pleasant Valley Basin in the agency ordinance code. But ordinance E, the other provisions, ordinance E remains, and of course, it remains for the other two basins that are not covered by this allocation plan. It assigns the allocations initially to extraction facilities with the intent to transition to a land-based system in the future. It continues the ability for operators to combine their extraction facilities into what we call combination codes or comm codes for reporting and for extraction pooling within a basin. It does identify that the GSPs may have management areas that the board may want to limit those comm codes to management areas. It also has an article in there to provide that the ordinance, this ordinance would govern if there's conflict with other agency ordinances, or if any provision of the ordinance is declared invalid, the others would remain. And it does include a review of the effectiveness of the ordinance towards meeting the GSP sustainability goals at least once every five years. And there is one clause that was in the previous draft ordinance that inadvertently was not included in this version, but it needs to go back in. It was formerly section 5.4, but it would go in as 5.5. It would say extraction allocations may be transfer adjusted as provided in Article 9 or Article 11 of this ordinance. So the initial allocations, as we just discussed, would be based on, simply on the extractions, the annual average extraction from that base period of 2005 through 14. Extractions that incurred surcharges would be excluded from that average, though. In our November 9th version, we had a reference to excluding the use of credits. We had some stakeholder feedback about how many operators use the credits to balance the wet and dry and even that pumping out over the time. We looked at that, it was very valid. So we agreed that that probably did not belong in there, so we removed it. But unfortunately, I did not catch that in the text. So even though it mentions it in the text, it's not included in the ordinance. Any questions on that part? Okay. In terms of the Santa Clara River deliveries, and to address your question, Director Bennett, in terms of the, this revised scenario, simplified scenario of just using the 2005 to 2014 base period, it, it did include also using that for the Santa Clara River deliveries. And in the historical PTP and PV deliveries of that, during that period, is a total of 15,600 acre feet. And what the ordinance says, if the actual deliveries are less than the historical amount, then United, for instance, for United, then United may increase its allocation to the difference between the historical and the actual PTP deliveries. And conversely, if the actual deliveries are greater than the historical amount, then United has to decrease their extraction by the difference between the actual and historical. I'll have an example here in a minute. It also says that those deliveries, they have to be taken, they have to be when they're available in lieu of the groundwater pumping. And it works the same way for the Pleasant Valley County Water District for the deliveries on the Pleasant Valley Pipeline. And again, the, that initial allocation of 15,600, that would be reduced proportionally to what the groundwater reductions that your board ultimately will end up implementing. So we showed this graph last time at the 24th meeting, and basically, this just shows, let's see if I can get my cursor, there it goes. It's a little, and so here's the starting allocation based on that historical amount. And then with the same assumptions we've been using all along and of 40% reduction for a purpose of this example, it would reduce to 9,360 by the end of 20 years for an average of 12,000, about 12 and a half thousand over that 20-year period. And the green bar just shows the 14,000 acre feet of average annual projected deliveries long-term that United projects. And then the bars are the historical deliveries projected in the future that we had used previously.
So back on your last slide, you made reference, you said that if actual, the third bullet, if actual PTP deliveries are less than historical amount, United may increase extraction allocation to the difference, right, between the historical and the actual?
Yes.
So now if you go to the next slide here, so if, if United, so if, they're talking about hopefully averaging 14,000 over the 20-year period, but in these first few years, they think it's going to be much less likely that they'll get that kind of diversion, right? And so we're saying if, let's say they divert only 1,000, right, next year. So that's 14,600 that they'll be able to increase their extraction by?
Well, United, yes, United and PV, because that's both the PV and Pleasant Valley. Yes, in this system, that's how, what they would be able to do. In long-term, the projections are that it should be, there should be more water delivered than what the pumping against that would allow. But you are correct that if in the near term, the deliveries don't come, there could be significantly greater pumping.
So we could be way down the first three, four, or five years. So we're at five years and we're still way down, right? Then there's no true-up that takes place?
Not in this method.
Not in this.
Yeah, that's something that your board could consider changing, but this is what the, what we understood the direction from the last meeting.
Does anybody remember the direction from the board on that? Because I don't remember that, and I don't, I don't understand the logic of it. I don't understand the logic of not truing up. So does anybody remember what the logic was of the board, or can anybody help me with that?
Well, I think the anticipation was that five years may be too short, given the, given the historical deliveries and given the, I guess, the ongoing project work at United with respect to increasing diversions, that we may not get a true picture in five years. No, it may be the 10 or 15 is a better, a better alternative. I don't think we discussed those, but I think the reason we didn't talk about five was simply because that was kind of premature in the context of this development.
My sense is if we had that discussion, and to the extent that I would participate in it, I would suggest you wouldn't have to do the complete true-up, but certainly if in five years you were way off, you would want to start truing something up and not put all of your eggs in the last five years, hoping that somehow United was going to start averaging 20 or 25,000, you know, acre feet to make up for it. I mean, if you're, you know, if you're at only a couple thousand acre feet, which is a possibility at the five-year mark, it's a little hard to think you're going to suddenly be at 20 or 25,000, you know, just 10 years later, you know, going forward. So I am concerned and would like to entertain the possibility of getting some kind of true-up in there after five years into the ordinance, so.
Whatever that's worth, I put that out there.
I might be able to add some clarification there. The reality of it is, is if that you don't end up with 15,000 acre feet of water going in the pipelines, the converse of that is, we didn't get 50,000 acre feet off the river for groundwater recharge. Now, where do I come up with that? The long-term historical for United and the Freeman diversion is 65,000 acre feet a year that comes off that. 50,000 of that went into our spreading ponds, and 15,000 of it went down the pipelines. So your true-up is going to come on the other side of it, in that you didn't get the water into the ground, and the groundwater levels for everyone went down. And so that's the allocation that will be adjusted. Because the true fact of it is whoever, wherever this surface water goes, the entire basin is better off for it. And the fact that surface water is not available, the entire basin is impacted by it.
So what is the true-up that we would have if we didn't get the water in the ground and water levels are lower? I don't, I don't see anything in the ordinance that says we're going to true-up and change our allocations.
Well, that's where that slope becomes more, at the five years, that's where that slope is going to become more steep as our yield goes down.
How does a slope become steeper?
The assumptions of our sustainable yield are based upon X amount of acre feet coming off the river that's going to go to ground, the surface water storage, okay? If that doesn't happen, then the entire basin is, is farther away from its goal. So that's the side of it that's going to be adjusted. That's my understanding of it.
Well, my, my understanding is we adjust the number, but it's not based on water levels. We adjust the number, I mean, if, if for some reason we aren't getting this much surface water, then we have to decrease the surface water allocation number, and that's what makes it steeper in terms of, in terms of.
So if you reduce the surface water, this graph here, you're only impacting two entities. Yet everyone benefits from the surface water coming off the river. You're not going to get to that number until you get to the other number. They're, they're going to go hand in hand.
Yeah, I guess what I see it is the total number that everybody gets to divide up, the size of the pie, is a combination of what we think is the sustainable number and what we think the surface allocation number is, right? To put those two together, right? So if that's the case, then when you're saying everybody benefits and you only affect two, we affect everybody. If we, if we say we're going to use a lower surface number, right, then the size of the pie is smaller. Now everybody's got to divide a smaller pie.
Okay, let me try it this way. Let's see. United and PV have a groundwater allocation based on '05 through '14 that is totally separate and distinct from the surface water. Same as Camrose, same as Oxnard, the same as everyone else. That's why they're also impacted by that water not coming off the river. And how it's shared throughout everyone. Whereas if you deplete this one here, you're only impacting those individuals that are on PTP and PV.
I'm not talking about only affecting those. I'm talking about affecting the size of the pie that we're going to be dividing up. I'm not talking about them. I'm talking about, I mean, somebody from the outside would look at this and go, 14,000, when you, when we haven't been diverting very much surface water, 14,000 is a pretty generous number to be put plugging in. I'm willing to plug it in based on United's expert testimony that they think they can get there. But I think the only way you could rationally plug that in is you say, but we're going to start truing that number up, because right now, if you look at the situation, you've had United make presentations, many presentations to us, saying things are going to be in real trouble for surface water diversion. That was before we started the Sigma thing. As a result of the increased regulations, et cetera, they were projecting a dramatic drop in surface water diversions. Now they're saying, it's not going to be such a dramatic drop, right? We're going to average 14,000. Okay, hopefully they're right, that we're going to get these projects online and all of that. But that's a, that's a big assumption to add, but we're adding 14,000 to the total size of the pie that we're going to divide up. Now, if we're not getting that 14,000 at the five years, we originally had written into the document truing that up, correct, Kim?
That is correct.
And that disappeared somehow, at least without a vigorous conversation about it here, because we're having that vigorous conversation right now, I think, right?
It's mentioned twice in the minutes. I've been reading the minutes while you're talking. In the first one, it says that it is there, and in the second mention in the minutes, it says that an alternative allocation. it says that an alternative allocation was presented in which there wasn't a true-up. Now, I don't see where we decided which one it was going to be. I don't, that's reported in the minutes.
I guess that if it was explored, it was talked about, but I, I certainly don't feel like, I, I don't feel like I stalled off on that one and went, yeah, I'm fine, don't, don't true it up if we're not there. So, I would offer that as a, at least for me, a stumbling block at this point in time. But I appreciate the, the attempt to try to explain how maybe some people thought it was the right thing to do. So, staff, do you have any more to add in terms of why it got dropped?
Well, I will.
Based on what, what did the board say that made staff say, let's drop the true-up?
Really looking at a simplified approach, the, the projected water approach was seemed complex, and so that's, but, you know, as staff, we don't, we don't have a preference on that necessarily. I mean, we did get vigorous comments about this from, especially from M&amp;I stakeholders, and they, they, they're, they are very, they have the same concerns that you do, Director Bennett.
So, they, they want it to be trued up?
Yes.
And so, based on what, why did staff drop it?
Well, we, we, and perhaps we misinterpreted your board if that was the case, but we, we took away that the alternative approach that was proposed would simplify, and rather than have a true-up, it would start just across the board, all allocation on the same base period, and then it would be, the amount that could be pumped against that allocation would be reduced proportional to the groundwater. So, the amount of pumping against that would, would follow a red line.
I, I certainly remember supporting the simplification.
Right.
But I, I don't see why you can't have simplification and still have the true-up take place.
But it ramps down.
It does, right.
So, and if I understand this ordinance correctly, we haven't dealt with ramp-down yet.
That is correct.
And perhaps the most appropriate place to deal with either the true-up is the same, in the same framework as we're dealing with the ramp-down, since one affects the other.
And, and that, that makes some sense. I want to turn to our council. If we adopt the ordinance, do we still have the ability when we do the ramp-down to add into it this true-up, the five-year true-up at that, at that time, if that is the more appropriate time to do it?
Generally speaking, yes. I, I think it would be helpful to leave, for this board to express the intent to revisit that issue, so we avoid any sort of claim that parties were making planning assumptions based on the fact that there would not be a true-up.
Is, is the board, for the purposes of moving forward, is the board comfortable with saying that's still open for us to revisit that issue?
Yes.
I'm open to that revision, but I'm, I'm, I have questions about the time period. One thought I had when you guys were going back and forth was, was just rain years, lately they've been very sporadic. We can get a high rain year, and what if that happens on the sixth year? And now, we've readjusted things to some extreme level of non-reseat of surface water, and that has actually changed things quite greatly. So, I'm, I'd like to look at the time schedule.
Sure. And, and a legitimate conversation would be, don't, you don't have to do a full, you said, what if we readjust it to an extreme? But if, but if you don't readjust at all, that would be an extreme thing also. If, if you happen to stay at a really low number, and you didn't readjust at all, that would be extreme, just like if you said, well, now we're going to adjust from 14,000, we're going to adjust down to 2,000, right? That would be extreme. So, I don't think you have to do, you know, an extreme adjustment, but there ought to, it seems like there ought to be an adjustment, at least, at least, at least the opportunity for us to consider this as the adjustment. So, if, if the board is comfortable with that, whenever we make the appropriate motions, if it included that, that would help me drop this at this point in time, so we can move on. Thank you.
You comfortable with that?
Yeah. So, I have a, an example, and maybe it was clear how that would work. I do have a typo, though I saw, unfortunately. So, in this example, for instance, this is similar to what Pleasant Valley would be, a 7,000 acre foot groundwater allocation, a 10,000 acre foot historical PV allocation. If it's less than historical, say it's only 3,000 acre feet coming in, then the extraction allocation would be the 7,000 acre feet of groundwater, less the, actually, it's plus the difference of the, that's a typo there, of the historical minus what actually was delivered, and they'd have a allocation that year of 14,000. Conversely, if they're greater than normal, the historical, say 15,000, then they would have the 7,000 acre feet, less the difference between the historical, I mean, the actual delivery and the historical and the extraction allocation of 2,000. That's how it, that's how the, it would work as it is currently written in the ordinance. So, moving on to reporting, the, this is one part of the ordinance that got, that was significantly rewritten for clarity. We got a lot of comments that it wasn't clear what was required by what kind of operators, so we worked to clean that up. And so, we're requiring specific reporting, especially in terms of parcels and whatnot, so that we can develop the information we need to ultimately move to the land-based allocation that your board has directed we move to. Operators of extractions facilities used for agricultural irrigation would be additionally required to report. I mean, everybody required to report their extraction, moving to monthly extraction reporting through the tiered implementation that your board's already, or will be considering. But operators of ag wells would be required to additionally report parcel numbers that they're irrigating, the irrigated acres of each parcel, and the source of all the water that was used to irrigate the parcels. Ag water purveyors, including mutual water companies, special districts and municipalities, supplying groundwater and loo water deliveries for agricultural irrigation, we're required to report the total volume of water from each source being supplied, location identification of each turnout and meter, the monthly water deliveries to and meterings from each turnout, the parcels served by each meter and turnout, and the customer name associated with each of those parcels. For M&amp;I water purveyors, mutual water companies, special districts and municipalities would be required to report the total volume of water from each source being supplied, monthly water deliveries for all the water being supplied, and either a list of all the parcel numbers that are supplied water, or a GIS shapefile that includes all the parcels that are supplied the water. Domestic and M&amp;I operators, individual operators, would be required to additionally report each parcel supplied by the operator's extraction facility. Any question on the reporting? Okay. Allocation, carryover, this is the same as it's been the last several meetings, it hasn't changed. Operators could carry over up to 50% of their annual allocation in one year. Maximum 100% of the current year annual allocation could be carried over in any given year. The carryover expires in five years. There is a clause in here that if need be, in order to be consistent with GSP management, the executive officer may limit the use of carryover in a given year equally across all operators with not less than a 60-day notice prior to the beginning of the calendar year. Now, we did have a limited borrowing in there previously at the 24th meeting. We had some questions about that from stakeholders. Your board directed us to remove that limited borrowing section, so we have. Allocation transfers, prior to the GSPs being adopted, authorized the executive officer to make temporary allocation transfers. It authorized the executive officer to make permanent transfers once the GSPs are adopted. And then, again, it clarifies that when ag, irrigated ag land changes to an M&amp;I use, that ag allocation transfers over to the M&amp;I use.
I have one question. The middle point, authorizes executive officer to approve permanent allocations after adoption. Does anybody think there should be some maximum limit on how much the executive officer can approve for permanent allocations without that being reviewed by the board or something? I mean, do we want allocation adoptions of huge amounts being done without board approval? It's a question. I, I really don't have an opinion at this point in time, I just raised the question.
I'm thinking myself that if this is ag to M&amp;I development, yeah, he could have full, full authority to.
I think he's talking about the middle one.
Yeah, that's one I'm referring to also, if this, if those permanent transfers are ag to M&amp;I because of development.
Director Ronnie, there could be other transfers that are not directly, these aren't necessarily all interconnected. They could be that kind of transfer, but it, it doesn't have to, it could be some other kind of transfer as well.
Mr. Pratt, can I just ask you, do you, do you, do you have a thought on this?
No, Pratt, this is trying to be expeditious.
Yeah, great, thank you.
So, if, if your board wanted to set a cap on that, where it would have to come to, to your board for approval, staff would be fine with that.
Is this within the same basin?
Yes.
This is, I didn't check that, I just thought, is it say that in the ordinance?
It's a, it's a good question, and we, if it doesn't specify that.
I, I'm not ready to specify a cap, I'm just ready to ask the question. I'm just asking the question.
Well, Director Craven was, was asking, is it specifically restricted to within the basin?
Should it be?
And we're not.
I don't see where it's specifying.
It may make sense to say that, and then if there ever is some reason that, for a transfer in the future that needs to be outside, then that would have to be, a variance come to your board.
Probably makes sense as a precaution. What do directors think of that?
Right, we'll, we'll add that.
Yeah.
In the past, we thought inter-basin transfers weren't a good idea. But.
In general, we, that's what we've said, so it would make sense to not give that authority. So, County Council, can that adjustment be made for this first read?
Yes, it can.
Anything else on transfers? The other thing that we added was, we added some language to make it clear that the water market transfers could occur. We got some comments that maybe it was too restrictively written, so we, we added that in there. That was the difference between the November 9th and the this version. Reduction of allocations, again, it says that your board will determine the need for the reduction in the methodology following the GSP completion, but your board did indicate that you thought, was your intent to set a minimum allocation for ag operators as part of the method of allocation reduction? Variances, so there is a variance process in there, inclusive procedure for owners or operators seeking variance in initial allocation or other variance need that may come up. So, that's the end of my presentation on this. I do have, I'm going to go over a few of the comments that we received, comment letters, I think that are worth diving into in a little bit more detail. If you have any questions on any of the ordinance now, or I'm happy to move on. Okay?
Quick comment on inter-basin transfers, I'm thinking further, maybe we don't want to limit it, maybe there are boundaries that transfers might make sense, and if we were to strictly draw a line that way, then we, we maybe tie the hands of staff in, in the terms of things that make sense.
Or maybe those should come to the board.
Just for the record, I thought that's what your board said, intra, okay, we, we'll handle that, inter, you want to see. Inter, in other words, across basins, right? But intra, inside a basin, it's a net zero gain.
I'm okay with it. I, I can't think of a reason why, but just was a thought.
Okay. So, we received a comment letter, and then a new comment letter that was similar from Pleasant Valley County Water District and Guadalaska Mutual Water Company to request to include Canale Creek project water in the allocation. So, I understand that Pleasant Valley wants to be able to pump against that water if it wasn't delivered, and claim that not doing so causes them a 23% penalty. Staff continues with the same recommendations we had before, and point out that the Canale Creek project, it's a, it's a net zero project because it's a good project. We're not saying it's not a good project, because it moves pumping away from an area of depression to an areas that can support it better. But, well, PV can decrease its pumping for each acre foot not pumped, it can be, it is, either is or can be pumped elsewhere in the basin, under the current resolution by Camrosa. If there are issues that Pleasant Valley wants to look at with Canale Creek historical deliveries and their pumping during the base period, we had discussed at the October 24th meeting, continue to believe that that should be addressed through a variance process, but that's going to have to be carefully done, because what we don't want to do is double count water, because if they reduce their extraction, somebody else may have increased their extraction, and the, and so, that could be handled through a variance process. And we do recommend that the project continue under resolution, but not be included as part of the allocation. It's, it's different from the San Clara River water, because that's delivered in loo, there's not credits transferred on that, and of course, San Clara River water's had a, a unique recognition by the, by Fox Canyon, by the agency. And just to take a look, I thought it was worth looking at where Pleasant Valley County would be in the new ordinance. And so, what we're looking at here is the green on the bottom is extraction, and this is the period of 2005 through 2014 base period, and then the three years, four years that we have reporting for following that through 2017. So, right here would be the extraction allocation of a little over 7,000 acre feet. And then the blue is the PV deliveries over that period of time, and they total about 9,800 acre feet. And so, the total allocation would be 16,888 up here, which is more than PV has pumped with this, in this time, in fact, within the time of record since 1985, since we have reporting, at least what's reported to the agency. And if we added Canale Creek water on top, which they will still get as surface water, nothing we're doing here affects that, we say that resolution will continue. But if we added that as part of the allocation over the base period, that would bring the allocation way up here. And so, we think, we stand by our recommendations from before, that it not be included as part of the allocation, that be continued in, in the future, as it is now through the resolution, and that if there is anything in terms of the pumping during that base period, that Pleasant Valley thinks needs to be addressed. Valley thinks needs to be addressed, that it's, there's some unique circumstances there, that that be addressed through variance process.
Kim?
Yeah.
One concern that I have about that going forward is as we are looking at this allocation plan in front of us, we are up already at about 105,000 acre feet of total pumping between the agricultural allocation of about 54,000, MNI at about 37,000, and then Cano, oh correction, Santa Clara River deliveries at 15,000. Puts us at about 105,000 acre feet a year. If you, if we take this to the variance process and listen to it there, are we not, I'm concerned about adding even more pumping on to the top of the 105, which is greater than what we've already been doing historically here for the past couple of years, and increasing the pumping from the basin now if they do get it, and that discussion goes that way, that now we're at 110,000 acre feet a year.
Director Ronnie, as I mentioned before, I think in the variance process, we'd have to look at where that water was pumped and try and adjust that so that it was net zero because if, if, if that water was, that was not pumped by Pleasant Valley, was pumped elsewhere in the basin through a credit transfer, then we can't add that pumping back in without addressing where it was extracted based on the credit that was delivered. So we'd have to look, it would be, it would be a bit of an accounting exercise, and whoever received those credits, I think United was one of the ones largely received those during that period of time. And we haven't talked to United about that. We have talked, we're just presenting the, the issue here.
Okay.
Kim, I, perhaps we can discuss this further on before we wind up adopting anything. As much as I, I understand, I respect staff's recommendation, I think it's bad policy irrespective of what happened in the past. Not including an allocation for PV for the Cano Creek water, forgetting about the Cano Creek project for the moment. It disincentivizes PV and any other agency from taking any other new water. You know, Camrosa, for example, is developing a project that will provide 800, let's say 800 to 1,000 acre feet of new water that it could import or export to PV next year or the year after. If I'm PV, why would I take that water if taking that water over time means I'm going to pump less and ultimately get a lower allocation? Because that's what you're telling them here. Pump less, relieve the strain on the, on the basin today, and we'll punish you for it tomorrow. That's what this does. I don't get it. I think it's bad policy.
Well, Chair West, I understand that position. However, Pleasant Valley and Camrosa did move forward with this project. It did not increase their allocation. It was a specific project allocation that did not give them, either of those entities, additional allocation to pump from.
The point is they, PV decreased its pumping because they received the water from the pro, you know, from the project. And today, when we're looking at an allocation, we're not giving them any credit for the pumping they decreased. We're basically saying, you know, thanks for decreasing it going forward. We're not going to give you any allocation based up because of that. We're not going to give you any credit for the fact that you invested in this other project and, and didn't pump the basin. We're going to, we're going to therefore reduce your allocation going forward. Not only do I think that's bad for PV, but I think that's bad policy, such a bad precedent for every other agency out there, or every other potential user out there who gets the opportunity to bring in water from an additional source at their own expense, knowing in the end it winds up curtailing their pumping allocation.
Could I address why I don't think it's bad policy?
Okay.
And, and that is, there's a, there's a difference. Number one, nobody's saying that in the future, if you bring in new water, we're going to decrease your allocation. All right? That, that's, that's not the corollary here because had PV brought in the water and not transferred the credit to somebody else to pump that water, they would have a much stronger argument for exactly what you're saying. So the example you're talking about, somebody developed a new water source. If they take the new water source and simply rest their water, right? They're not transferring the credit to anybody else, so you don't have, you don't have the reason to decrease their allocation. In this situation, PV took the water, but transferred the pumping credit to somebody else. And that's the distinction between the example you're using about it being bad policy because it would encourage no one to develop new water and what happened with PV. PV transferred the credits, and so it dramatically weakens, I'm not saying it's completely illogical argument that they make, but it dramatically weakens their argument that they should not have their pumping allocation because they've essentially transferred the right to pump that water to somebody else.
But what you're missing is the water brought in. PV only has a credit to transfer because it brought in new water. And by doing that, you know, the new, it brought in an acre foot of water, somebody else pumped out an acre foot of water elsewhere, but PV didn't pump the acre foot of water that it brought in. Didn't have to. Okay? So if, if PV didn't take in, take in that water, it'll be pumping from the basin. We all know that. But because they brought it in and an equal amount was drawn out someplace else, the basin still benefits because the basin isn't being, isn't being debited by that amount. You know, even if the water brought in is being pumped someplace else, the water was never pumped originally in the first place where it would have been. So, and I think that's the factor that's missing in the equation. It's not as if the amount of water pumped by Camrosa is the amount that PV, PV would have pumped. It's not that simple. The amount that Camrosa pumped is the amount that PV imported into the basin, reducing the demand on the basin even if an equal amount gets pumped.
Well, that, what I would say, I think you're missing is when people took Santa Clara River water, they didn't pump, right? But they didn't transfer that credit to anybody else. That water got left in the ground and no claim was put on that water. So should we give them credit for that? Yes, and that's what we're doing. We're giving them credit. We're giving PV credit for Santa Clara River water that they took where they didn't transfer the, transferring the credit completely changes leaving it in there because now somebody has claim on that water, right? And so we do give them credit in the Santa Clara River because they didn't transfer the credit. But with Cano Creek, they transferred the credit to somebody else, and that's the distinction.
Thank you.
That we disagree about.
And let me add one more thing, and I think it's irrespective of where credits went back and forth. What we're trying to determine here is initial allocation, an initial starting point of a pumper in the basin. And because, as Mr. West said, they didn't pump that groundwater and they took the surface water, they are now in effect not having that portion counted as part of their initial starting allocation. That's the argument from PV. It's not about where the water went or who took what. It's really about the starting point and that ultimate division of the pie. That's the key. That's why it ought to be included.
Mr. Chair, oh, I had a couple of observations, but if.
Part of what's also got to factor into this discussion is there's still an outstanding liability against the basin. The allocation or the credits that have been generated from it and were transferred either to Camrosa, Kiagus, or United are still there under a storage program, and there's still a liability out there that could be cashed in. Now, if those credits could be retired, let's say United bought them and retired them as a conservation measure, I think this problem becomes a lot easier. But the fact that they're there and can be pumped out as soon as the basin conditions allow means that we cannot eliminate them, and we have to factor that in as to going forward, how do we get to sustainable yield? Because they will be pumped. At this point, we have to assume they will be pumped.
If one assumes they will be pumped, you could also assume there might be a variety of ways to retire them. They could be limited in a certain amount. They could be somehow stretched out over a period of time. There could be a repurchase agreement, as you discussed. But in terms of, of a fair starting point for one entity that did the right thing and took surface water, they're being penalized in the end in their starting point. That's the problem.
A few observations. So if your board should move forward and decide that they should be included as part of the allocation, I think there's a couple of things to consider. One is, if that's the case, then moving forward, it shouldn't generate a credit because now they have the allocation, and to get a storage credit on top of that wouldn't make sense. Because when it came in, it was in, under the, the resolution, there's a credit generated to be pumped. And to give an allocation for it and a credit for it doesn't make sense. So that, I would suggest that we have to relook at that credit program and possibly terminate that. The other thing, couple of other things, this is not, this water is principally coming from the Hill Canyon Waste River Tree and Plant for Thousand Oaks through a contract with Camrosa that is, has a contract, pays for that water. It's not subject to the vagaries of nature and hydrologic cycle and rain the way that the Santa Clara River water is. And one thing that we'll note here is that Camrosa also diverts that water for its own use into its own system, both in Pleasant Valley and Santa Rosa. So you'll see before 2014, the resolution, the program was under Kiagus's operation. 2014, Camrosa took over, and you'll see Camrosa has been delivering considerably less water to PV since its operations because it has been using water for its own. So if you're going to conclude that as part of the allocation, there's going to have to be something that will compel Camrosa to continue delivering that water, some minimum amount, to Pleasant Valley because right now it's, it's pretty much up to Camrosa's operational decision as to how much water they deliver to PV and how much they deliver to their own operation.
I, I would offer, that's another, another one of the, one of the complications of this and why it's different. If United, United is telling us they're going to try to deliver all the water that they can, right, in terms of this, there's no guarantee that Camrosa will deliver what was, what they used to, what used to be delivered. So it would be like us giving everybody credit for taking Santa Clara River water and then saying, but there's not going to be Santa Clara River water delivered in the future. But you're still allowed to continue to pump from the basin because you used to take Santa Clara River water. We don't, you know, Cam, there is no agreement, as, as is pointed out here, there's no agreement that Camrosa is going to still deliver the average historical amount that Pleasant Valley received at that time. This is a, this is a more complicated third-party agreement than Santa Clara River water with United. And another reason why, and at least extreme caution should be used before you built it into somebody's allocation, because that's, once it's built into their allocation, they get to take it forever regardless of whether Camrosa delivers any more or not. They, they get to take that. And that's, that's not the situation that we have with United. If United said, we're not going to guarantee we're going to deliver any more water, you know, or we're not even going to, you know, make, you know, make that, we wouldn't be adding 14,000 right now to the, to the pie. So we don't have that assurance coming in there. That's another thing.
See, that's precisely why I think PV needs an allocation. You're right. Circumstances could change, and that water, the Cano Creek water, might not be available to PV next year or may not be available in the, in the amounts that they've historically used, or should have not been available to them in amounts they've hit for deferred pumping, which is why they might, you know, at the very least, need an allocation for the delta between the historical deliveries or the average historical deliveries and what they actually receive in any given year. You know, so that if they've been getting 4,000 acre feet and Camrosa can only deliver two, not to, not to, to find a point on it, Kim, but Cano Creek water is more subject to those environmental factors than you might imagine. We've seen those numbers, you know, year over year. But if Camrosa can only deliver 2,000 acre feet, then, then PV needs that protection, you know, needs to be able to pump what they, for, you know, deferred pumping or foregone, had foregone, so.
Chair, just a point of clarification, to make sure when we discuss this, I just want to make sure I heard something that Kim had told me. But the starting allocation, so the first delivery from the, this diversion sometime 2002, as I understand it, and talking with Tony Stafford earlier today. And we have records that go back to 1985 supplied to us by various pumpers. And what, Kim, in our staff meeting on this, Kim had told me that the allocation that PV would get is greater than any amount it's pumped historically on average over, or just with the PV, excuse me, with the Santa Clara water. Did I mishear that, Kim?
No, that's, that's correct. And.
The point being that it's not clear that they reduced pumping as a result of getting, and that's why the variance process, if you want us to dive deep on this, we're going to have to pull all the agreements out, and we're going to have to look at. But right now, there's no intention to disadvantage them. They would be getting an allocation that's greater than anything they've pumped in the records they've supplied to us without the Cano Creek water.
And I might point out that the last meeting, we had certainly nobody ready to say how much of that water would have infiltrated into the basin, but certainly some percentage of that water would have infiltrated into the basin. But instead, what we did was we let that water get delivered to PV and used instead of infiltrating into the basin, and we gave somebody credit to pump that water out of the basin and, which is a further complication. But would we be ready to say, we're going to end the credits for all future transfers of Camrosa water to PV? Because that's what you would have to do. United is not getting a credit when they transfer water through the, from Santa Clara River water. They don't get a credit for transferring that water. So you'd have to end that arrangement with, with Camrosa. You'd have to try to recognize the fact that you have stopped a source of water that would normally be infiltrating into the basin, and you're giving people credit to pump that water, and now you're giving somebody else credit to pump more water. I think using this example here, you know, as, as pointing out what, what Kim is pointing out here, they would have the ability to pump more water than they have been pumping, right? We would say, well, you know, that's, they may have some disadvantages if they don't get all the surface water that they used to get. That is a problem. But it's a real problem for the basin if they suddenly get to pump, make up all of that difference by pumping, right? And it'd be an impact on, on certainly everybody else because the pie would just be divided with a much bigger chunk there for, for PV in that setup.
Let me just say, I'm not sure that it's valid to say that if the water didn't go to Pleasant Valley, it would go down in, and maybe we need to talk to Tony at some point about that. Because when, they, they may have spreading grounds or something where it would go down. When we did a study of the creek for an Indy PES permit many years ago, it was determined that the water in the creek wasn't going to go down.
Yeah, just at the last meeting.
At least from our point down, and that's from some point up around Camrose Springs on there.
I only point out that at the last meeting, there was no agreement as to what percentage would be infiltrated and what wouldn't. And so you have to assume some, some would and some wouldn't, and I don't know what that number would be.
You know, one more thing. The, the, Mr. Pratt and, and Kim correctly stated that they were talking about a groundwater pumping allocation based on, if you look at this graph, 2005, and that's got all the water in it. The trouble is, if you got to go back further, you got to go back further to when you didn't see all that surface water delivery from Cano Creek, and then you can actually see that the total wa- And then you can actually see that the total water used was right up in that level. And as you follow, and I'm looking at a graph that was in our packet, in our letter from Mr. Saperstein, and I've been seeing this graph before. It shows, you know, steady decreases in water use, number one, which is contrary to still a lot of statements we hear and see, that, you know, ag somehow didn't cut back. Well, you know, that's false. But more importantly, you look at this total pumping, private wells and PV wells, and then you start to go down the line here towards the future. That surface water was, was supplemented or substituted for the previous pumping. That's what's going on here. That's the statement. And so it's about starting point. It's not about credits, and it's not about any of those other things. It's about that initial starting allocation and this organization's relationship to others. That's it.
So would, would you be supportive of ending them giving credits to Camrosa for this water in the future? If you were going to give them a starting allocation?
Well, you know, that particular program makes the program work, right? It enables PV to do an exchange. And we, and we do know, by the way, that that deal with Camrosa is a win for the basin. It's not a net zero. We know that Camrosa is not taken. And we've actually limited that in our ordinance. They can't take all that. They've, there's not a one-for-one.
But you're giving, but you're giving PV an allocation credit increase so they can pump more, and at the same time.
When the surface water doesn't show up.
At the same time, they're transferring a, a pumping credit to Camrosa. So you, you don't get that with the United water. We, we don't do that with Santa Clara River water. And it wouldn't make sense for us to do that.
It's about that starting point. We know we're going to ramp down to a finish line. That's going to be less than what we're doing now. It's setting that initial allocation, that initial place in line. It's not a place in line, but it's really just a, a status of one individual group. And we're talking about a big chunk of land here.
Well, if, if, if you're going to, if you're going to create that starting spot, shouldn't you create it the same for everybody? People that take Santa Clara River water, should they be allowed to give credits for their, for the Santa Clara River water that they take?
It doesn't have to do with credits. It has to do with the starting point, how we divide those allocations.
Yeah, so we're going to divide it. Person A gets Camrosa water, and they get to give credits away when they take it. Person B gets Santa Clara River water, they don't get to give credits away. How is that, how's that fair, or how's that equal?
It's about starting point only. We're all going to, we're all going to reduce. This, this carry forth of credits is, is not relative to that starting point conversation.
How could it not be about the starting point conversation? Two people have, they're getting the same starting point, but one gets to transfer credits and the other one doesn't because of action that, that we're taking here. At a minimum, if you, if, if you've, if you bought the argument, you'd have to not let that continue to be the case. I, I see. I think it's, you know, you say it's only about the starting point, it's completely different in terms of starting point.
We disagree.
Okay. Moving on to comments from MNI stakeholders. As we talked about earlier, they are very concerned about the Santa Clara River water allocations and not having the true-up. They've stated a, a very strong preference to see a true-up. They feel that if the water doesn't come, it, it would cause a net increase in ag extractions significantly to the MNI operators. They also have expressed, again, strong preference for their allocation amongst themselves with, using the T base period. We've explained to them that, you know, in this new ordinance, there are no pools, no, thanks, lost it for a second, pools to sub-allocate in. But there is a, there is a lot of consternation about the, the shift in some operators or entities will get more and some will get less. That, that's obviously the same that happens in ag, in different base periods. However, the MNI operators have been operating under the same, they haven't shifted with II or change of operations. The relative pumping one to one another has been the same since 2014, since ordinance E was implemented. We have suggested that if there is some specific unusual circumstance during that base period, and again, that's a more of a variant for a particular entity, that's more of a variance look for that particular entity. For instance, Port Huaynemi Water Agency was one that said they were very disproportionately affected by the recession with the B front properties, and they saw their demand just tank during that time, and felt that it's not representative. That agency also, we met with them yesterday with their attorney and our attorney, and they've asked for recognition of the Oxnard Huaynemi Pipeline, because they have some, they have an agreement with United, they want that recognition of that agreement. We, we haven't quite run that to ground. We've been talking about what, what that might mean, and what other agreements there might be out there. And so, but I do bring that up, they did, they are specifically concerned about that.
Kim, I've got to ask for an expansion on that. What do you mean by recognition? Just simply adding the OH agreement as an addendum to the back of the GSP?
Well, I think they just want to have it recognize that there is this agreement that they had, they've changed their operation from their pumping to contract with United to provide that water. And so I would suggest that they, I, I think I saw, yeah. I, I would suggest that in public comments, they can explain their reasoning why, I'm not sure I fully understand it.
Okay.
Kim, with respect to the MNI's use of the T, I agree that we're not allocating separate pools, but we can, having identified all the MNI pumpers, identify what their extractions are for the base period, based on the base period. Could they, can they not, if 100% of them got together and decided collectively, you know, our joint allocation is X, and we want to transfer some of those allocations between and among ourselves, isn't that something they could do under this ordinance? Subject to the executive officer's approval?
Right. There'd have to be individual transfers. It might get, look ugly, get complicated, but yes, I mean, it's conceivable that could be done. I'm looking to counsel to confirm. Okay. And finally, we got a number of comments from the U.S. Navy. We did have a, a big meeting with the Navy and their regional council up from San Diego, as well as base personnel from the Naval Base Ventura County and from the Channel Islands Air National Guard regarding their sovereignty and, and recognition of some specific federal issues that they have. And they, they actually requested that there be a separate allocation pool. This is back when there were pools. And they said, they, we want a federal allocation pool in addition to the MNI pool. Now, we don't have pools that sort of moot, but it was kind of, it was complicated anyway since most of their extraction and, and water is from third-party water purveyors from PHWA. And so that was confusing. We have included in the ordinance, in terms of definition, the person quotes to whom this allocation ordinance applies. And this language came from the Sigma legislation itself, which was worked out by the state and the federal government. And it says, "to the extent authorized by law or any federal agency." We had another conference call with the State Water Resources Control Board. The Navy's been talking to them about this issue. This is a big issue in, in the basin where China Lake is at, because they're a major water user there. And we had a, a conference call with our legal counsel and with the state board legal counsel. And they agreed in principle with the GMA's ordinance language for the allocation ordinance. And they, they said, yes, the state worked that language out specifically with the federal government. And so we recommend that there not be a change. And we've conveyed that to the Navy, and that if there are specific federal water needs or naval needs that are unique to them, that, that be addressed through variance process. So that concludes my presentation. So our recommendations are to receive and file this presentation, conduct a public hearing, provide direction regarding finalization of the ordinance. I mean, two of the, the outstanding issues are how we handle the Santa Clara River water, and then there's obviously a lot of discussion on Caneo Creek water. And then conduct a first reading title only of the ordinance, and then set December 5th as the date for a public hearing, consider adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you, Kim. Any other questions from the board before we convene the public hearing? Hearing none. Why don't we then, any questions or comments from public with respect to the proposed ordinance? All right, hearing none, then we'll.
I'm not going to get away with that.
Nobody wants to be first.
Yeah, I know. Shoot the messenger, right? Tom Dirdor, on behalf of Dirdor Family Farms, I submitted a, a letter to the board. Hopefully you've had a chance to review that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have with respect to that. First and foremost, obviously, the, the main impetus of, of the letter is that we've been talking now for two and a half years about allocations, about markets, about ramp downs, starting points, allocations, transfers of allocations. We've been talking about water rights. Problem is, we're not in a court of law. You guys are not an adjudicated body. You're not performing the functions of judicial, the judicial branch. Sigma makes it very clear that this role is for management of water, and they've created a streamlined process for the adjudication of water rights. So it's your board's job to use existing water rights, not what all these attorneys who have come up here and Kim identified, all the different things that have gone on, all those were, were opportunities for attorneys to come in here and tell you what would maybe happen in an adjudication. Not what the current status of the law is, what would happen in adjudication. That doesn't matter. Right? We started this whole process with what I'll call the Mulhart Plan, which was, we know we can't do anything about water rights, so you guys go outside, arm wrestle with each other, come up with a plan, and if you don't, I'm going to cut your water by 20%. Well, unfortunately, that didn't work, right? We spent two and a half years, you'll hear the OPV group tell you how much money they spent on scientists and attorneys and everything else, but it didn't happen, right? So now you guys are trying to do it. And again, we're, we're before the wrong body. If we're talking about water rights, we need to go across the street. So that's number one. And hopefully you can see that my letter sets out a mechanism that would work, that is legal, and it actually addresses everything you guys were just arguing about. With respect to in-lu water, with respect to true-ups, with respect to variances, it works. I mean, it's a plan that actually works. So I wish you'd take a little bit of time to look at that. And regarding time, there's no reason to rush through this. I mean, every single one of us back here, we've already planted everything, right? Budgets are set, crops are in the ground. Nothing you guys do in the next 30 days is going to change how much water any one of us is going to use. Your job is to manage water, right? And ultimately get us on a ramp, and ultimately get us down to using less water. We all get that. Nothing you do in the next 30 days is going to help that. For the, for this water year, it's done. So why race to get it done? There's no point. There's literally no articulated reason to get this done in 30 days, other than you want to. Right? There's no water savings reason to do it. There's no legal reason, there's no Sigma requirement. Let's get this done right, please. You guys had a good discussion today, the back and forth, the in-lu water, and that's not a PV issue. Every single well in the OPV basin has an in-lu water issue. We decided when to buy water from districts, not buy from districts. That affects my allocation, right? Why don't I get credit? I agree with you 100%, Mr. West. I mean, when somebody makes an affirmative decision to do something that benefits the basin, you shouldn't get harmed for doing that. We were told to please buy water from the district because they have access to surface water. Therefore, you're benefiting the district by not pumping that water out of the ground. Now, I'm going to get hammered on my allocation because of that. That's not fair. We need to continue that discussion, right? We just got to the surface of that discussion with PV. That applies to every well in the district. So I would appreciate if we can continue this dialogue for an ongoing period of time to get this thing done right. Thank you.
Afternoon, Chair West, members of the board, Jared Bouchard, General Manager with Pleasant Valley County Water District. I'm going to stay away from some of the technical stuff, because I think you're going to hear plenty of that, and so correcting some of the statements about Caneo Creek that may, may be out there. However, I do want to, just on one point, because the graph sat up there, and again, we're seeing presentations from staff that misrepresent the Pleasant Valley condition and what's happened. The, the, the graphs that were placed up there, and staff statement that we've only shown that we pumped 16,000 acre feet, therefore we get additional water. That's a misstatement, period, and untruth. The only reason that occurs is because we've taken the in-lu sources. That pumping would have been higher, and so you've got to take a look at the applied water or all the water that PV used. Otherwise, it would have been a pumping number, and you've got to start with the foundational principles of in-lu water when you start asking the question. You can't just look at that pumping number and say, well, we're giving them a windfall. That's not true. It's not true. And I'm going to let other people address the issue, the misstatements about Caneo Creek. However, what I do want to discuss or reaffirm is Director West's comments. A core principle that has allowed this agency and this community, this water community, to come together for 30 years, has been trust and the ability for us all to work together to be treated fairly in the process. And that's why this agency has worked, why you've seen reductions, why it's happened. We're losing that today in the conversations that we're having. The very comment that Director Bennett made, that somehow an in-lu water user forfeited their right to groundwater flies in the face of water law, it flies in the face of your own enacting legislation. That is unreasonable to think that anybody that participated in an in-lu project here forfeited their right to access that groundwater for the benefit of everybody else. It, it just doesn't work. If you move forward without respecting these in-lu water sources and those of us that participate in conjunctive use, I can promise you, your next step when you adopt a GSP, and part of your GSP planning is pumping shift projects to benefit the basin. Who in their right mind would participate in a GMA-related pumping shift project when the message you establish here today is that if you participate in that project, you will forever forfeit your right to access that groundwater if the project goes away? I don't think that's the message this board wants to send. I think I've heard every one of you say that you want to respect these projects. However, by not respecting PV's in-lu water sources within the allocation plan, that will be the message that's set for the rest of the users out here, and why would they want to participate in a conjunctive use project going forward? That's the statement that's being made, and I think that ought to settle with you all, and we maybe need to take a pause here. Let's get back somewhere where peoples, we, we had a plan that was working here, that the OPV white paper, maybe we didn't have all the details. We were somewhere six months ago, that the MNI community could support it, the majority of the ag community could support it, maybe we had some other details to flush out. We're sitting here today, not in that position. I think we need to hit the pause button, and let's think this through before we go forward. But I would hope that, at the very least, this board rethinks its policy of not respecting the in-lu sources and the projects that your board, by resolution, year after year approved, each of those credit transfers that happened. Those were single-year credit transfers for Caneo Creek. It wasn't granting PV's allocation and entitlement and forever to somebody else. And that's what, that's what this is doing. And that's, that's just not an acceptable way to move forward.
Can I ask you one question?
Please.
I appreciate you, you saying, why would anybody participate in a future in-lu project if this was going to happen? this was going to happen? Should we, when we have future In-Lu projects, allow somebody to also transfer the credit for the water that they get in the In-Lu project?
So I'm going to use an example. I was thinking that through while you were here. And maybe they're not identical, okay? What the Canelo Creek project is, is a pumping shift project, right? Better for the basin. PV doesn't pump it here. We take our allocation and we say, hey, we don't pump it here. And we send it over to Camarosa, pumping shift. Let's say that 100% of it's pumped. That's what happens, right? There's another project that sits out here that's been tremendously successful for the GMA and the health of the basin. And you're going to hear from those folks. I don't, I used to represent them, but it's Port Winnebago Water Agency. And those folks are shutting down their coastal wells. Their allocation still lies with the agency. They do exactly what you're saying, maybe a little differently. They don't pump their well. They don't pump the water. And they shift a credit transfer up to United to pump it in a better area. This isn't, this isn't as complicated as we're making it. It's a pumping shift project. And it's about the starting point, as Director Borchard said. The starting point comes back to PV. We get full credit for it. And we've demonstrated without you all demanding it, without anybody demanding it, that we're going to continue to take that water. We'll continue to do it. But we need to, when it doesn't show up, because we have no guarantee that they're going to deliver it or that it'll continue to be there, we need to have the equal right to access that water in the ground if it doesn't show up. And it's not as complicated as we're making it here. And the credit question to me is really one that I still don't understand. If I take the argument of what I heard up here again today, it says to me, pump every drop of water going forward, Jared. Don't ever take a chance of not pumping it because if you walk back in front of this board, you're going to get punished for it.
I can hear you say that, but an answer to my question, should we allow somebody in the future who takes In-Lu water be able to take the In-Lu water and also transfer the credit for the water that they don't take?
I think the question you're asking is, it's project by project. That's the way the Canelo Creek project works.
You're saying, yes?
If it makes sense.
Okay.
Sure. If it makes sense. You've got to look at the projects individually.
Tony Stafford, General Manager for Camarosa Water District. And what I was going to say has changed drastically in the last 20 minutes. So I'll start with that first. It's the Canelo Creek project. And first, I do need to clarify some misstatements that were, have continually been made in these presentations. One is, to start off with, this isn't a Fox Canyon GMA project. The project is between Camarosa and TO. Fox Canyon can choose to benefit from this or not. The one difference in this project, it's a foreign water project. You're bringing water into the basin. And the question about infiltration, I was out of town at the last board meeting, and the question was, what happens if the project goes away? And then it was, you asked again, what about infiltration? If, the project's not going away. The water may stop coming to Fox Canyon, but the project's still going to exist. So whatever we're sending to PV now, we will now pump it into other areas, which are outside of Fox Canyon, which would be mainly the center of the basin. So there's not going to be any more infiltration into the basins within Fox Canyon. And I hear that we don't understand if this has reduced pumping. December of 2013, we were asked by this board to fund an impact analysis based on this project of whether it reduced pumping from its inception to December of 2013. And the impact report came back and said that, yes, it definitely reduced pumping by PV. And then it was put into Resolution 1401 that said it definitely decreased pumping. So now we're having, we're having an argument or a debate about we can't produce numbers that says it reduced pumping. But it goes without saying that it did. One clarification on one of the slides up there was talking about when Camarosa took over the project, it was shown that our deliveries had decreased. Well, we never took over the project. We've been the operator since day one. So our strategies haven't, haven't deviated from originally. There were some drought periods in there where all water from recycled treatment plants were reduced, and that's what you were seeing on the chart. But to say that it was because Camarosa took over operation is a misstatement. And I just want to emphasize what Jared was saying. And you may understand this, but I just want to make sure it's clear that the ask isn't an allocation, a pumping allocation and a credit to Camarosa. It's either or. The credit lies with PV. If we deliver an acre foot of water, that pumping allocation for that year now goes to Camarosa. So we can pump that acre foot of water. PV's allocation is reduced for that year by that acre foot that we delivered to them. So it's not giving them, whatever the number is, 4,000 acre feet of allocation and Camarosa 4,000 credits. So in the difference between, one of the differences between our project and the Santa Clara River water, you said Santa Clara River water should get credits? Well, what this proposal in front of you, they don't get credits. But if the water doesn't show up, they get to pump that water anyway. So that's better than a credit. So I'll answer any questions about Canelo Creek, and then I'll move on to the proposal. Okay?
Tony, say that again for me, that you said that the Camarosa PV contract is that you send an acre foot of water to PV. PV gives you a credit for that acre foot. And then GMA deducts from PV's balance that acre foot.
That's the proposal. That's what we're looking for in this allocation. And I'm not going to speak for Jared, but that's what it would be. And that's what it is. We get, we only get a credit if we deliver that acre foot of water.
Yeah, but there's not a deduction.
There is not a...
Yeah. But what our, our ask and PV's ask is that because they took this water, if they hadn't, we're going to assume, because of the impact, the scientists say that pumping was reduced. If this project didn't exist, they would have pumped that amount of water. And today, we wouldn't be having that discussion because that would be, that would be built into their allocation. But because they chose to participate in this project, their pumping over that period was reduced by some amount. So now, if that, if that Canelo Creek water goes away, they are, you are reducing their, what would have been their allocation forever.
Oh, I get that. And I was, I was asking a question on the, on the concept of, contractually, the way this project works now. They give you a credit for what they didn't pump because they received Canelo Creek water.
That's...
GMA does not debit their allocation at this point.
Yeah, our agreement was, is with PV and through Resolution 1401 with the agency. And that is, if we give them, sell them an acre foot of water, they give us an acre foot allocation.
And what you would like to see in the future is what you're telling us, that there would be a...
Well, on the amount that they would have pumped is what we're talking about now. It's not the allocation that staff is proposing to them that's in question now. It's, it's the allocation that they would have received if they hadn't have participated in this program.
Okay.
Okay. One thing that we would like to see, MNI would like to see in this proposal, is the true-up. And I'm not going to talk a lot about that because it was kicked, kicked around in, in here. But I will go back to prior to October 24th. The OPV, Ag and MNI, but their OPV presentation at the workshop did show a true-up. And we think it should be a true-up because it would be detrimental to the basin to let that Santa Clara River water float on top. And then if it never shows up, continually pump the basin down at that amount. So we do think there should be a true-up. One thing I would request, and I've talked to Kim about in Section 2.2.2, is talk about available PV allocations, not just actual. And I know there's going to be some definitions, some input from Ag and, and staff on what available means. You don't have that page?
We don't have that page. We go from Article 2 to Article 3.
Well, then you can just trust me on this. That's what it is.
Add a 2.2.2.
So anyway, what we're saying is that there, if water's made available, we would think they should take it. And we understand there's difficulties, and that's why I say we have to define what available is. Because if you're going to try to give them all their water in January when it's raining, I'm not so sure that that should be counted as available because they have no place to put it.
Could you repeat your suggested change again?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Could you repeat your suggested change again? We were all looking for it, to change it in here.
Did you find it?
We don't have, the page is missing, literally missing from our document.
6.2.2.
6.2. Oh, you said 2.2. That's why we couldn't find it.
6.2.2, okay.
We have that page.
And that, that wasn't an intentional trick either.
That's right. So what is your suggested change again, please?
The sixth word is actual. Our recommendation is it be available instead of actual deliveries. Nope.
Point 2.
Yeah.
2.
Can I hear which available PV deliveries?
Thank you. I'll ask staff about this after all the comments, what they think of the change. But thank you.
Deal with this. And then in 6.2.4, the same thing. And then in 10.1, if there is a true-up, it could take care of this. But if not, let's say that water's not delivered for five years and the basin, that amount that is not delivered, the 15,000 acre feet, the first year is pumped. Well, then in 10.1, it says, if sustainable yield is less than the total extraction allocations established in Article 6, then all extraction allocations, adjusted or otherwise, shall be reduced accordingly. So if there's not a true-up, MNI would suffer by this reduction in allocation if it applies to all extractions and if the over-pumping was the result of Santa Clara River water not showing up. But a true-up could take care of most of this if that's doable.
And could I ask a question of counsel? If there's not a true-up with this ordinance, we're really not making a distinction between MNI water and Ag water, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And then in, one more, and then I'll be through. And we can discuss this later too, but I want to go on record as the reporting requirements for special districts and municipalities, I think are captured in 7.3. And I, I think whether it's Ag or MNI, the reporting requirements, and when I say Ag or MNI, if special districts or municipalities are reporting MNI sales or Ag sales for our districts, it should be what you have defined in 7.3. You make a distinct, we think 7.2 should be, you should mark out special districts and municipalities because our Ag customers are just another customer on our distribution system. They have no right to our facility allocation. So, and we can discuss that for clarity later, but I want to go on record saying that.
But if we're changing, we're doing the first read and title only today, correct, counsel? So if we're going to change something, we need to...
Okay.
Know whether we're going to change it or not.
So you think those two should be combined?
What is it that you are suggesting should be changed?
In 7.2, strike special districts and municipalities. And in 7.3, just add deliveries for MNI and/or Ag, so that Ag and MNI are both under 7.3.
Add that where? Add deliveries?
Second line?
Right after municipal and industrial.
In 7.3, it should be deliveries for MNI and Ag, you shall report the following.
Or In-Lu deliveries for municipal and industrial?
And Ag.
And Ag.
You shall report the following. And in 7.4, I'm not sure what that's...
You said you have, we're done. I'm sorry, you can't add another one.
7.4, I'm not sure what the, what we're doing here because, because 7.3 is not asking for each assessor parcel number. And so does 7.4.1 apply to all of those above? Individual operators. That's it. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Chairman West and members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Amanda Fagan, and I'm the Community Planning Liaison Officer for Naval Base Ventura County. First, for the record, Naval Base Ventura County transmitted a letter to Fox Canyon GMA staff on November 5th, signed out by our commanding officer. Staff received the letter, but it was not included in the board agenda, though it was provided as a handout today, and staff briefly discussed its content. The letter reiterates our advocacy for special recognition of a Federal Reserve water right and associated allocation within the Groundwater Sustainability Plan and the allocation ordinance. The letter requests a separate allocation category not subject to the groundwater regulatory requirements found in the draft-proposed ordinance. It is well-established that the federal government is not subject to state groundwater regulation. The draft allocation ordinance begin to recognize and differentiate the federal government in Article 4 definitions whereby the definition of person is modified to the extent authorized by law. Staff has indicated that it is the agency's intent to recognize the Federal Reserve water rights within the revised Groundwater Sustainability Plan and to rely on the definition of person in the allocation ordinance to acknowledge the special status of the federal government. This acknowledgement of the limitations of federal law is a good start. However, we believe that in the entrance of, in the interest of transparency, the ordinance should provide more clarity that the federal operators are not subject to the regulation imposed in the ordinance relative to borrowing, transfers, and/or variances. Director Aranio asked for additional clarification on the Oxnard-Winnebago Pipeline issue as well, and I will defer further explanation to the Port Winnebago Water Agency. However, I will mention that this issue of who is the allocation holder of record for the Oxnard-Winnebago Pipeline users is a very important one to the Navy. The draft ordinance assigns the allocations to the well operator. For those agencies that use the Oxnard-Winnebago Pipeline, allocations should be assigned to the OH Pipeline Contractors directly, consistent with longstanding contractual language that allocations used by United on behalf of those agencies are held in trust for the end-user agencies. Please note that the Navy, along with other Oxnard-Winnebago Pipeline contractors, voluntarily shifted pumping away from our own coastal wells more than 20 years ago in order to support the health of the aquifer and prevent seawater intrusion. We should not now be penalized in the allocation process because of those efforts. And other speakers have mentioned that again today. speakers have mentioned that again today. Water is critical to our mission accomplishment with a focus on sustainability, resiliency, and compatibility. With the recent Hill and Woolsey fires, which included mandatory evacuation orders for Point Magoo, the need for sufficient water supply and water pressures to ensure adequate fire flow, and the need for flexibility to respond to emergencies and other emergent operational needs is particularly poignant. NBVC has leaned forward to ensure water sustainability for decades, voluntarily reporting groundwater extractions, shifting pumping away from the coast to protect the aquifer, and achieving significant water conservation. Due to the absence of a waiver of congressional sovereign immunity, we have engaged in these initiatives as a matter of comedy and as a good neighbor, rather than as a function of state law or local ordinance. These water conservation efforts resulted in water reductions by more than half of our total consumption between 2000 and 2016, and were intended to assist local efforts to achieve sustainability, as the right thing to do in a time of drought and not because we were required to. Our water system has reached a point where additional conservation would be operationally infeasible without substantial additional investments due to system requirements for fire flow and to meet water quality standards. We have initiated a water master planning process to explore future water supply and system options. We could begin pumping our own coastal wells again, though we recognize the importance of working with our partners across the basin towards sustainability. As we continue to act as a good cooperative neighbor, we would ask that you reciprocate and recognize the board's regulatory limits related to the unique relationship of the federal government on groundwater regulation. As always, we remain committed to exploring and supporting partnerships that achieve our respective community and military missions. Thank you.
Before you go.
Yes.
I have difficulty with what you've said. And it comes off to me as you wanting both your cake and eating it too. You've given us a letter very strongly worded, saying you have immunity. You can do damn well whatever you please, and I get that as a Navy base and what you got to do and what you got to accomplish out there. And you've stated over and again that you're not going to contribute to groundwater sustainability fees, pumping fees, or anything in order to help the other people around you, that you have immunity. Yet at the same time, you say that you're a good neighbor and that you want to work with us in sustainability, yet you won't honor any allocation, or any reductions, or any fees to help develop new supplies. I'm hearing both, and it doesn't reconcile with me.
Director Aranio, I think that we've been consistent in our message, that, you know, we have already invested significantly in water conservation. Again, our total water consumption has been reduced by half since 2000.
And I will hear that from 30 people in this room.
And we have reached a point at which our water system, any further reductions become operationally infeasible.
And I will hear that from 40 people in this room.
I completely, I completely understand. I just want you to understand that as a user of around 1% of the total water pumping in the basin, we are a tiny piece of this picture. But we want the board to recognize and be clear and transparent about the regulatory limits. And so we're simply asking for the board to look at that issue in the GSP and in the ordinance, and to recognize that. I mean, we've seen from other groundwater agencies, other GSAs, that have included provisions that recognize those limitations. The Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority included a specific provision acknowledging those limitations. We shared it with staff. And again, as we mentioned, you know, as I said at the last board meeting and again today, you know, we think that modification of the word "person" is a good start. We just want to see more clarity. And we have said over and over for the last two years at least, that we're willing to be a good partner, that we're willing to explore partnerships and projects that help to achieve the sustainable yield within the basin. But at the same time, we don't want to be ignored in this process and have those regulatory limits be discounted. And so again, we're willing to be a good partner and to participate with projects. But again, within the legal limitations on what we're able to participate.
So I've got one, one last thing. I'll leave you alone and stop beating up on you. If you want to start your good neighbor, start paying your groundwater extraction fees, and come into the fold with the replenishment fees that everyone else is going to be paying here, and let us develop new supplies. That makes you a good neighbor, and I will, I will sign off that you can have however much water you need in the name of self-defense for the nation, because that's really what you're saying here. And when you ask us to carve out an allocation for you and a paragraph for you and a section in this, I don't know if you're asking for 1,000 acre feet, or 100,000 acre feet,
Certainly not.
Or any number that you seem or deem necessary. How do we quantify that and write that in? And I'm not expecting you to, you know, write that at the board here, but if you really want to send a message, at least to me, that you're a good neighbor and that you really want to be with us, just pay your fees.
See, the
Don't hide behind the wall.
The extraction fees and the replenishment fees are directly tied to that waiver of sovereign immunity. We, our council has told us that we cannot pay those fees. That doesn't mean we can't participate in other ways. I mean, we have talked with water agencies about potential projects, access to federal land for future supply projects. I mean, that's something that we are open to if, you know, if given the chance, but there are certain limitations that we just, that we have to be respectful of.
Understood. Thank you.
I just have one question. You said that you could go back to using your wells and pumping near the coast, but then wouldn't you go back to the situation where you were that made you get into the pipeline agreement, that you'd have such bad water quality that you couldn't do a lot of your operations?
So we have two wells, both on Port Wainimi and on Point Magoo. The Port Wainimi well is of relatively good quality. It is listed as our backup source and could be pumped. The Point Magoo well certainly would require work and treatment. But I just want you to understand that we shifted away from our coastal wells as part of that bigger picture, and for us to now be penalized for that shift is, you know, is a difficult pill to swallow.
Good afternoon, Chair West and members of the board. Carmen Ramirez, Mayor Portem, City of Oxnard. I'm here with Sherry Klima, who's one of our deputy city attorneys of Oxnard. I wish we had, I wish we had more elected officials other than you folks up there in the audience. I don't think we do. So we're going to speak for the cities.
Carmen, could you speak closer to the mic so everybody can hear what you're saying?
Sure could.
Thanks.
Okay. I'll let Sherry go first.
So Can you hear me all right? Okay. So for two years, you all know, and I've said very similar things every time I've been up here, and, you know, for two years, over two years, we've kind of negotiated this 60-40 split. And all of your shareholders, or all of your, sorry, stakeholders have been a part of that negotiation. And it's kind of awkward to me that we keep deviating from that. In this case, you know, we're deviating from that 60-40 split with this allocation for SCR water, this in lieu pumping allocation. It's just essentially 15,000 acre feet additional allocation to Ag, because it's not, you don't have something in the ordinance. And Director Bennett, you pointed this out correctly earlier. You need to have something in the ordinance that says it's not an allocation. It is, if anything, it's a borrowing right, or it's some sort of ability to use that water, however you want to define it. But if you don't write in the ordinance that it's just that, then it becomes an additional allocation to Ag. And so then that means that you've got way, you know, you've completely deviated from that 60-40 split. The other aspect is if you do want to allow borrowing for those entities because they're not taking from Santa Clara water, and that's not something that we have any concern about, that's fine. But we would request that we also be able to borrow, that MNI be able to borrow, that everybody be able to borrow, at whatever degree you see fit.
I want to just remind people, the City of Oxnard has done a lot for conservation. I'm hoping everybody has. We have our advanced water purification facility, which we hope to expand to provide more water for the region actually, as well as our residents and businesses. And Director Bennett, you pointed out that the important point, that the pumping in lieu of the SCR water needs to be trued up. First, yes, that should be addressed in this ordinance. Otherwise, you're not allowing borrowing. It's a gift, a higher allocation. We suggest you allow up to five years. Secondly, if you want to allow borrowing, allow everyone to borrow equally. We're repeating that point. This doesn't just affect Santa Clara River water, but also the drought affects everyone. Our cities need to borrow for operational reasons, and we have to keep in mind what will happen if there's an earthquake and we cannot get state water from met. Thirdly, the variance process is subject to so much arbitrariness, we need to have a standard we can rely on. It's a big concern.
And then finally, Chair West, you pointed out correctly that bringing in new water should be encouraged. And, you know, we agree with that. You mentioned that in the context of the Caneo Creek project. But the same argument can be made for the cities buying met water. So, you know, we have imported water instead of pumping. That is water that our cities need, that is water that our residents, that our business owners need. And without having that allocation, and that is water that goes into the basin, of course, that we are, by not pumping it, we are leaving the water in the basin, and then we're being penalized for it. Oxnard, just by example, in the past couple of years, has used anywhere from 25,000 to 27,000 acre feet of water per year. And we pump, including the OH Pipeline pumping, it's 13,000 or 14,000. So about half or so of our water we pump, and the other half we buy. And so if there is now going to be an in lieu ability to borrow from the basin in lieu because you have it pumped, because you've taken those efforts to not deplete the basin further, then we'd like to get that amount as well. And obviously, you're laughing, because it's ridiculous, right? It's ridiculous for everyone, really, is the truth. We ought to go back to the 60-40 split, and if you want to allow borrowing, allow all the entities to borrow at, again, whatever percentage or amount you deem fit. But this argument of, you know, some entities have taken certain steps, and otherwise you're discouraging them from, you know, taking those other steps to bring in other water, well, that argument kind of falls apart when you look at the amount of water that the cities have brought in through met water. And we really have brought in a lot of water, and that water has been very, very expensive, and very much has helped the basin. Thank you.
I have a question for you, and then a question for staff, but you're, you've kept referring to borrowing, you're referring to the Santa Clara River water as being a borrowing program, is that what you're saying? Because our ordinance doesn't have any borrowing in it, it only has a carryover.
Right. So I'm suggesting that if you want to make the Santa Clara River water program, however you want to put it into the ordinance as a borrowing mechanism, that you can do that? Or you can
That if we're going to do that, then you're saying we should also do it to the cities for the water they brought in for state water.
Allow everybody to borrow whatever amount. I don't see any difference in Santa Clara River water than to any other
Okay, thank you.
Steps that have been taken.
So I want to ask staff this question, and that is, the, when we're putting the 14,000 Santa Clara River water into the system, that's growing the pie for everybody, is that correct?
It's growing the pie for those who receive water on the PTP or on PV pipelines.
So only the people that receive the water on the pipeline? Doesn't grow the allocation number for everybody?
No. It goes on top of the allocation number.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The other thing I just want to point out is that when we make the statement that, "Why would anybody participate in a new effort to bring water in?", as we're talking about the Camrosa water, the Cayega's Creek, or the, everybody knows what water I'm talking about there, the cities can make the same argument. They could say, "Why would, why would cities participate in bringing in more state water?" You know, in this situation. So I think in my mind, at least, it speaks to the distinction. Now, the Santa Clara River water is a, you know, the credits didn't go out for that, and I'll come back to that topic here later, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chair West, members of the board, my name's Peter Candy. I am special counsel to the Channel Islands Beach District. I'm here speaking on their behalf today as a member agency of the Port Wainimi Water Agency, PHWA, and also on behalf of other, the interests of other members of that agency. I'd like to just start by pointing out that, you know, this process was going very, very well for MNI for practically a year and a half, where we were having regular discussions internally as well as with Ag, and had come up with a plan to present, separate plans for MNI and Ag to present to your board, and with the expectation that those would be adopted, since that was the process that we were led to believe we were engaging in, and spent a lot of time and energy, you know, negotiating and coming up with a consensus approach. And that was essentially the 60-40 split, and then separate pools to sub-allocate within those pools. And lo and behold, everything was proceeding along fine, it seemed to us until the October 24th meeting, the last meeting essentially, when it was thrown out the door. And it turned everything upside down for not only Ag, but also for MNI. And so MNI came together, and we had discussions and looked at the numbers and saw that, in a very significant way, the new approach, the new base period, getting rid of the pools and allocating, establishing initial allocations according to the '05-2014 base period, and then ramping down proportionally from there, hit different operators disproportionately. And PHWA, within our group, is the one that gets hit the hardest. Effectively, 10% of PHWA's overall annual water supply portfolio gets taken off the table, under the GMA's proposed base period and approach versus what we had negotiated within our group, which was to sub-allocate based on T percentages. And I just wanted to point that out, because we don't know what we're going to do at this point with respect to that, if this ordinance gets adopted as it is, and are discussing our options at this point. It could ameliorate things for us, certainly, if, and the way that I read the current ordinance, the possibility of sub-allocating, if MNI were willing to do so, within its own established pool, is still on the table. We're talking about initial allocations, initial allocations to be assigned, and then if the MNI folks could get together and agree to aggregate the water that they have been allocated under the '05-14 base period, and sub-allocate according to an equitable approach that we've already agreed on, basically, sub-allocate according to T, then that solves a lot of the problem for us. There's nothing that I read in the ordinance, as it's proposed now, that would preclude that from happening. But I'd like to, I want to raise that, I want your board to be aware of it, I want you to be aware that we're going to continue to be pushing for that if this you to be aware that we're going to continue to be pushing for that if this ordinance gets adopted, and I don't want to have that possibility foreclosed. If the board feels like, no way, we're getting away from the pools, and there's no way to do the pools, then I'd like to know that upfront. It'd be helpful to us in terms of making decisions. With that said, I'd like to turn to the other issue that's a major PHWA issue, and that's this allocation holder of record. Under the ordinance, as you know, allocations are assigned to extraction facilities, and the holder of record of that allocation is the owner of the extraction facilities. Well, the beach communities and others, Navy included, Oxnard as well, transferred their pumping away from the coast in exchange for in lieu deliveries from United. And with the transfer of that pumping, they also transferred their allocations under prior GMA ordinances. The problem that we face with this ordinance is that that allocation is not assigned to the contractors on the OH Pipeline, that allocation is assigned to United. And we would like some recognition in the ordinance that, you know, that relationship exists, that it's really, the allocation holder of record is really the contractor, retail water service provider, that's receiving the water, and United is simply pumping that water for the benefit of and in trust for the contractors. And if we could get that recognition in the ordinance, then I think it would solve a lot of the problems that PHWA and the other OH Pipeline contractors have with it. Those are my comments. Got any questions, let me know.
I've got one for you. I was involved in the OH Agreement, helped negotiate it. And now I sit as the President of United Water Conservation District's Board of Directors. We went around for years with Rob Saberstein and the OH Contractors about that, Article 16 of the OH Agreement. And we went round and round and round and round about that. And that was a major fight. I understand PHWA is unique for whereabouts you are, and when you joined the OH Agreement, and how that allocation moved. And that is a different animal. But I do not think it's appropriate for this GSP or for this ordinance in order to dive into that and supersede that OH Agreement, and how that negotiation goes on, and how that contract works. So I encourage, at this point, that you get together with United staff and discuss that, and that we open up and go back to the OH Agreement contract and negotiations that went on, that were discussed over years, and waiting for Oxnard to approve and allow that to move forward, that all the other OH Contractors signed on for, and we can address that issue.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But I don't think it's appropriate for GMA.
I'm sorry, say again?
I do not believe it's appropriate for GMA.
Right. Well, we're not intending to supersede anything that's set forth in the contract, we just seek clarity as to the allocation hold of record, and feel that, you know, that is the, we're perfectly willing to assign that contractually to United, so that it's effectively the same situation that's mirrored right now, and that's been going on over the last 20 years. That's all we're asking for. Right now, that's not the situation, the way that the ordinance is proposed. Thank you.
Just to follow up to your question, Director Roney, I think what I understand you saying is that it's not appropriate for the GMA to take any side in the OH Pipeline Agreement, right? And I think what Peter and I are saying is that, as it's currently written, it is kind of advocating for one side, as it's currently written, which is on the side of the operator of the extraction facility. And if you're trying to remain neutral, it seems like that language ought to be amended in the next draft, which is to not take a side whatsoever. So that's what we'd like to see changed in the next draft of the ordinance.
Can you be a little more clear and tell us how you'd like it amended?
Yeah, we've shared language with GMA staff, just yesterday, we had a conversation, Mr. Loeb, and an email exchange with County Council as well. So I assume that, given our, a little bit more time between now and the next release of the draft, that perhaps staff will have a chance to kind of circulate that amongst the parties involved, and hopefully, we can come to some agreement on language that can be included in a future draft.
I'd just offer to the board that there must be many, many of these things where people, you know, that's why, you know, the issue of turnouts, et cetera. We want to move to a land-based allocation system, not an extractor allocation system, but I think everybody recognizes that's a long ways in the future, we need a lot more data. That's why we're going to ask for data. Ultimately, this board, I believe, will genuinely go to a land-based system. But if we tried to go in and undo everybody's agreements and figure out, oh, we've got to give these people this, and these people this, we'd never have the information that we need to be able to do that. That's my own sense. So I understand what you're asking for, but I don't think that that's, as Director Roney said, I don't think that that's what we should be unraveling at this point in time, until we get further down and we start to get the reporting. That's why we have the reporting requirements, tell us who's getting the water, how much, where is it coming from, and all of that. I offer that just in the issue of transparency in response to your request.
Sure, and I appreciate that explanation. And I'll just say, again, that, you know, that interim period may be very long, as we both know. That's my first point. The second point is, as you both stated, that we want the GMA to remain neutral in terms of making an opinion on the OH Pipeline Agreement. And if that is the case, seems to me that there ought to be a change in language from how it's currently written.
When you say "both stated," I don't ever remember stating that. I don't think there's anything about this agreement that anybody would say, it's got winners and losers all over the place. And I don't pretend to think that it is a completely neutral document, it is a document that just, it's the best that we can do, and it has winners and losers, but not always neutrality. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Lucy McGovern, I'm with the City of Camrio. My comments are fairly straightforward and more for clarification purposes. I had a question regarding ordinance, I mean, Article 5.1, the section of that. And this particular paragraph relates to Ordinance E. So are we talking about just repealing Ordinance E for the OPV areas? Because right now, the way that Ordinance E is written is for everything in the Fox Canyon area. So it's, I don't know, if it's within the basins, if that's what the, where I should be directed to, I needed to get the clarification on that. The other, Article 6, we need to add language regarding true-up period, the true-up period that was being proposed back in early October. The City of Camrio would support that. Article 7, we would suggest that you eliminate Section 7.2 and 7.4, and make the adjustments that, to the language as stated by Tony Stafford earlier.
Could you please repeat that? Article 7?
Eliminate 7.2.
Altogether?
Yeah, altogether, and 7.4. Because once you make those adjustments, that the revisions in language that Tony Stafford had suggested earlier, that would take care of that. And basically, what that means is agricultural entities that are using water are already reporting whether all of the water is, whether they're getting it from Camrio, or for, you know, domestic water or groundwater. So all Camrio would do would be reporting under, according to 7.3.
But I'm going to ask County Council to give us your opinion of that request, if we made the other changes that were requested. But a question I have is, for example, 7.2.5, customer name associated with each parcel, that's not listed in 7.3. Shouldn't we get the customer name associated with each parcel?
If that's appropriate. I think what's more appropriate would be the parcel that's getting that water.
Because a lot of them are ranchers.
I can't imagine why we wouldn't want to know the person's name also.
The rancher is making the forge, but she's saying is the parcel number, or the...
Sure. I mean, this asks for parcel number, and if you look at 7.2, it's 7.24 is give us a parcel number, 7.25 is give us a customer name.
We could give you a list of the customer names, that's not a, that's not a big deal for us?
But if we crossed out 7.2 altogether and 7.4, we wouldn't get that. I'm just trying to make sure.
Then you can put, yeah, you can add the...
When you combined it, you really got everything that you wanted.
Exactly.
If that's in fact what we do.
I think that's what she was asking.
Yeah. Okay.
Under Article 9, allocation transfers, this particular question, or for clarification, deals with Camrio's already approved transfers that were frozen under Ordinance E. And right now, I believe 9.5 and 9.6 would take care of that, but I'm not sure that, right now, the transfers that were approved by the board prior to Ordinance E was for 1.5 acre-feet per acre. So if that's what that, if that would be taken care of under 9.5 and 9.6, it would be really appreciated if we could get that clarified for us.
Can anybody answer that question?
I'm not sure I understand. Are you asking for retroactive, back on the Ag to MNI transfers that occurred before emergency Ordinance E?
Yeah. What happened is, there's some MNI transfers that were approved by the board prior to Ordinance E.
Okay.
At the rate of 1.5 acre-feet per acre.
Right.
Once Ordinance E came into play, they weren't actually transferred because they were not being served by Camrio quite yet. Ordinance E came in, and it froze it, and now they are, now MNI use, no longer Ag, and yet, we're still serving them, and we never got that transfer.
Got it, okay. So but specifically, it's about those transfers that were held in limbo?
Exactly.
Okay.
That were frozen by Ordinance E.
Yeah.
And right now, it says one-to-one, so one-to-one, is that one and a half to one and a half acre-feet per acre, or what? What's the actual amount?
I was concerned that you're asking about going back all the way to 1993.
Uh, no.
Just the ones that were frozen by Ordinance E, because it said...
Does staff have an answer to that question, either County Council?
So my approach to that would be, we've been discussing this with Camrio for a while, that's not appropriate for the ordinance, we need to settle that between ourselves, there's some record-keeping. But the intent was 1.5, it was two reduced by 20.
So that might be taken care of under 9.5 under this, which is something that Camrio and the executive officer would take care of. If that's the case, then we can live with that.
So my question for Council is, if we, can staff do, is the ordinance written in such a way that staff can handle this outside of the ordinance process?
Yes, the Article 9 would be prospective, so if there's a previously approved transfer at 1.5 acre-per acre, then that would be handled outside of this ordinance.
Great, thank you.
And the last one is, under Article 10, the reduction of allocations, that for, at the end of that line, it says "all," extractions would be, at the end of the first line, of 10.1.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Says that all extraction allocations would be adjusted. And this goes back to the point that Tony Stafford had brought up, is it might be, it might be taken care of if there's a true-up language in here.
But if not, you're saying it should apply to the people that were getting the benefit...
Exactly, that actually, over, or...
That got the benefit from the...
Yeah, that pumped the additional groundwater, that caused the not meeting the sustainability numbers. That's it.
I just want to ask County Council, if we change 10.1, and change, just drop that word "all," and if we said, if the sustainable yield is less than the total extraction allocations established in Article 6, then extraction allocations adjusted and otherwise shall be reduced according to a schedule or method determined by the board, wouldn't that give the board the flexibility to make that adjustment in any way that it saw appropriate at the time?
That's right, I follow it.
If you drop the word "all" at the end of the first line of 10.1, because right now, the way it's ordered, then all extraction allocation, it's saying all extraction allocations are going to be adjusted. So if Santa Clara River water doesn't come in, everybody, even the people that weren't receiving the benefit of the Santa Clara River water, would be getting, would have to be cut. And we might decide that that's what we want to do, but if we knocked out the word "all," I saw Director West nod his head, I think he was in agreement, if you knock out the word "all," then that gives the board the flexibility to adjust it to whatever they think is appropriate in terms of the adjustment.
It would increase the board's flexibility, yes, by deleting that.
I'm suggesting it, I'm not wedded yet, but it just seems like a way to deal with the issues being brought up by multiple speakers, particularly given we don't know what we're going to do with the true-up yet.
Any other questions or comments?
Good afternoon, Chair West, Board, Jurgen Gramco, Southland Sod Farm. Kim, if I could ask you to put that slide back up that showed the surface water bar chart with the lines? There's obviously a lot of conversation on the issue of surface water turning into extra groundwater pumping, and that there should be a true-up, and that ultimately, if the groundwater doesn't show up, that people that don't receive, I mean, surface water doesn't show up, people that don't receive surface water shouldn't be paying the price. If you look at that graph, the green line is the line that represents what United Water estimates they will be delivering. The red line is the surface water allocation that will be ratcheted down over the course of the 20 years. So mathematically, the area in the triangle between the red line and the green line and the point of intersection, as long as that area is smaller than that same area to the right of the point of intersection, there'll be enough water. So if you look at that, you can see that the amount of area in, to the right of the point of intersection exceeds by what, factor of five? So there's not a big risk here. And so to the extent that the ordinance has allowed PV and PTP to make up for surface water that doesn't arrive in the near term, it doesn't even have to come in at 14,000, it could come in at 12,000, and the thing would balance out.
But if it came in at 10, it would be, it would be a huge deficit.
You wouldn't know that, you wouldn't know that until you were further out than five years.
Sure, in five years, you might know that, but if in five years, you were nowhere near 10, that'd be hard to imagine.
Well, I mean, at some point, at some point, you have to rely on historical statistics. I mean, this whole ordinance is based on a longer 10-year base period that takes into consideration historical hydrological cycles. So I think every scientist will tell you that it's fair to assume that you're going to have a similar set of, a similar future from a projection of the past. And to the extent you're projecting such a conservative... And to the extent you're projecting such a conservative amount of surface water that could possibly be converted to groundwater pumping, I just don't see that the, the, the risk here is worth all of this controversy, their concern that, that's been, being expressed.
Pardon the interruption, but, but I, there's the historical record, but there's also significant change in the environmental regulations that affect United and their ability to, to divert. So we don't have just, you know, the comparison to the historical record, but we also have the things that United has, has pointed out, you know, very forcefully before we started this process about how dramatic those impacts were going to be on their ability to divert. So it's not apples to apples comparison.
What I can say to that regard is that United staff has taken those into consideration, even with the most recent decision that has been handed down. And staff has assured me over and again, and presented over and again, that they feel confident that that 14,000 acre feet a year number is a legitimate standing number in today's world with everything that we're seeing in front of us.
And to the extent that it's being characterized, you know, the ability to pump surface water that isn't delivered is being characterized as a sort of a, an additional allocation for Ag. I mean, call it, call it a borrowing. I mean, it is de facto borrowing because in a year that you get more surface water than the groundwater allocation, then your groundwater allocation is crammed down and, and vice versa. So it's de facto borrowing. It isn't accounted for year by year by year. Are you, are you ahead or behind? It's based on the fact that this graph shows that eventually you're going to be ahead simply because of the fact that there's so much more area to the right than there is to the left at the point of the intersection.
Since you're right on that point, I'd like to make a point that I think actually supports your, your contention, which is when people try to compare this to state water, the difference is we know this water was actually going to go into the basin. And they just said, instead of having it go into the basin and then pump it back out, while you had it out, it was just better to deliver it in the pipeline. And so unlike state water, nobody imports state water to put into the basin. And so there is a distinction. Yes, they both pump less, but this is water that was going into the basin anyway, which is I think why we had the original special treatment of this water. But it then leads to the question, Caneo Creek water was not, as, as people have been talking about here, would not be necessarily going into the basin. It's going to be diverted to other uses. And so it is not the same as Santa Clara River water that would be, be going into the basin. So from that standpoint, I think it, it supports the contention that you're making. This is special water, I guess.
Sounds like you agree with me.
On that.
I'm good with that.
On that one.
So just for, for the sort of secondary issues is we lost borrowing at the, at the last iteration of, of this ordinance. And we still have the expiration of credits carry forwards, excuse me. The expiration of carry forwards after five years. And I would ask that you reconsider the expiration of, of credits. They're, they, they're going to be very difficult to accumulate. And to the extent that you have a wet year, it's typically a big bonus year. And then you go through some fairly low water years. So you get this big bonus year, you, you build some credits. And now five years later, they're gone, but you haven't had another big bonus year.
Jurgen, I think that misreads the, the plan. You're right. If you accumulate in one year, it would expire in five. But the first water you use next year is the accumulated credit.
Well, that's out of the, that's out of this revision now.
It is.
Yeah. That's, that's gone. So if you want to put that back in, that'd be great. But.
I didn't realize that was gone.
Point, the point being, we need to be able to hang on to those, to use them when we need them. And five years is a fairly short fuse for them to expire. And then as this relates to the water market, this is just a comment. It would seem to me that if credits expire, they're going to have a date stamp on them. So now when they go into the water market, some of them are going to be worth more than others because of the, the time remaining to use them. So now you got to track each credit in relation to its timestamp. It seems to me that's going to be a additional administrative problem. Thanks.
One question for you. Last time you spoke about the Caneo Creek credits. Have you heard anything that's changed your opinion?
No, I, I.
Caneo Creek allocation and.
Frankly, I, I think that's a matter of, of accounting. I think you can trace it out. I think it's a question of showing that Pleasant Valley didn't use the water. I mean, if it's a simple matter of Pleasant Valley reduced its pumping by the amount of water that it received from Caneo Creek, then I think they ought to get the allocation.
What about the credit going to Camrosa?
Well, the credit, somebody, PV doesn't pump the water. So they now trade the credit to, to Camrosa. Camrosa pumps it, but Camrosa doesn't get the allocation. PV gets the allocation. Camrosa uses it. That's all that's happening.
So let me ask you this question then, Jurgen. If PV gets the allocation, it's a zero-sum game, meaning that we now have to reduce you as an overlier some amount in order to stay, in order to get that basin back to sustainable yield. Are we not by de facto then moving an allocation from an overlier to an appropriator? And are we not creating a problem there?
Yeah, maybe. Maybe. I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to stay out of the legal weeds here because there are so many of these places where this crosses over that I've, of late tried to leave the legal text on the shelf and look at this in a, you know, just a, just a simple way of trying to.
Just as a pumper, just leave the legalese out of it. You as a pumper, are you okay with you maybe ending up with a slightly less for PV to have slightly more? Because of.
Well, it's slightly less of a pie that grew. So I see it as net neutral.
Oh, okay.
If the pie grows, number one, one, previously you had said you thought it was double counting because of the credits.
Well, it's, it's double counting if PV did not reduce their pumping. It's double counting if, if, if the, if the water, if, if the water that came from Camrosa was paid for out of this bank of credits that accumulated as a result of, of being over-allocated in 1985 through 89. Because that was a distorted window, a window that had a dry period in it. So there wasn't as much surface water as normal. So to the extent you got a groundwater allocation and you were both a surface and groundwater user, you got a higher groundwater allocation than you would over a longer average. So those folks that benefited from that were able to accumulate credits. And so to the extent that credits were used that essentially came from that, what I would call incorrect allocation and were used to pay for the Camrosa water and pumping really didn't decrease, then that's double counting. Then it's kind of paying with counterfeit credits. So, you know, it's just really a question, did, did pumping decrease? If so, they should get it.
I, I would offer the idea, I don't know where you have the idea, but I would offer the idea that we're going to increase the size of the pie based on the Caneo Creek water is, is, I'm not hearing that in, in terms of the proposal, but thank you for your comments. I think you're right.
Good afternoon. Rob Saperstein for Pleasant County Valley.
You want to start again?
It's been a long afternoon.
It's really tough to concentrate while you guys are so focused and you're doing a great job trying to digest. Pleasant County Valley Water. Gualwaska Mutual Water Company, Pleasant Valley County. And I really want to start there. And I apologize to the audience. We didn't bring a slide. You guys have the, this one large page graph, and it really goes to the last one, Director Bennett that you asked. And you're going to point it out. Has Pleasant Valley County Water District reduced its overall pumping historically? And the answer is absolutely yes. And I'd first start with characterizing who Pleasant Valley County Water District is and who they represent. It, it's not a single pumper. They represent 30% of the irrigated agriculture in both the Pleasant Valley and Oxnard basins. It's not a single entity. It's a representative of a whole group of 30% of the agricultural overlying owners in the area that use both private wells and water that they purchased from Pleasant Valley. And that water is a mix of Santa Clara River water, pumped groundwater, more recently grape program water and Caneo Creek water. From the base period of 1985 to 1989 to their current use, they have in the aggregate. So it's counting all of their individual customer uses and Pleasant Valley's overall uses. They've reduced by 24, 25%. There is no question that as a district, as an overall land-using entity, there's been a dramatic reduction in water supplies. And that includes the backfill of Caneo Creek water and Santa Clara River water. And most, more recently, the use of, as much as they can of the recycled water from the city of Oxnard. During the base period, over 50%, over 50% of Pleasant Valley County Water District supplies came from a combination of Caneo Creek water, roughly 23%, and Santa Clara River water. Dramatic user of supplemental supplies, which means the groundwater basin is resting. And that water is allowing both Pleasant Valley to rest its pumping and its landowners to represent, to rest their pumping. So it's a combination of both of those two activities that provide a net benefit to the basin by use of those surface water supplies. I'll, I'll come back to dealing with the nuances of the, the payback on Santa Clara River water. But there is no question, both from a legal standpoint, not going to get into the weeds on that. GMA Enabling Act requires you to do it. California law requires you to do it. But as a matter of fairness and risk allocation, we're asking for respect of that historical use of Caneo Creek water to be included in the allocation given to Pleasant Valley County Water District. And, and I'll stop there for a second and, and restate what, in some ways, the dialogue between Director Bennett and Director Aronio was exactly the question. It's really a matter of a couple, three different tools that your board has moving forward in implementing this physical solution, this groundwater sustainability plan. Number one, you're setting allocations. You're just creating a starting point for all the entities, both Ag and MNI. And I'll come back to the 60-40 split in a minute. And we don't want to disrupt that by any means. That created peace in the world among your stakeholders. Setting that allocation and respecting MNI and allowing them to do it the way that they believe is equitable among them, all the power to them, allow them to do that. Setting the allocation among Ag just sets the initial allocation. The next tool you have are things like the payback, if however you want to call the reconciliation, this differential curve on Santa Clara River water reductions to make it somehow respect the actual delivery. So I get your concern, Director Bennett, but we won't know what's going to happen until it happens. And we'll have to decide, is it a five-year moving average, a seven-year moving average? The tools that you've built into the current ordinance allow you to make those looks. And to do it on whatever frequency the board decides, where I, where I and PV has concern is that, that really is amount, amounts to allocating risk. Is it a reduction only on the Santa Clara River water users, so PTP and PV systems? Or is it a failure in the overall deliveries in recharge of the basin off the Santa Clara River? That Director Aronio brought up almost the first 10 minutes of this discussion. Because that's what Santa Clara, Santa Clara River water does, is a combination of dramatically augment the overall supplies to every user in the basin. So some thought has to be given in how much of that failure of the Santa Clara River deliveries is overall reduction in all groundwater users and how much of it is just a failure in pipeline deliveries. So the concern that we have in some of the language that's been suggested is available supplies versus actual deliveries versus diversions off the river, those differences are very meaningful to the direct users and to all the constituents, all the stakeholders. That nuance is not dealt with well in the ordinance. And I, the way you've got it structured now, it's a punt. So the, I think it's Article 10 leaves to the board's discretion how to allocate that risk going forward. And that may be the best we can do if your decision is we've got to adopt an ordinance now. I don't get that urgency, but if your decision is we have to do it now, I just tell you, we will be back up here telling you that the, the, the success or failure of how the Santa Clara River performs fills multiple different buckets. And so allocating that, either success or failure, we'll be back arguing over that. It's not just a matter of how much is available for delivery and pipelines because that depends on United's priorities that vary based on water quality in the four bay, availability in every, any given year of how much water is on the river, reductions in storage in the four bay. All of those dynamics change United's behavior. And PV won't know how to react to this on-off switch that the way the ordinance is currently drafted. If water is available, you can't pump groundwater. We don't know how to respond to that. It's a, it's an inadequate drafting problem. We can fix it with, with some time. But if you don't want to spend the time to fix it, we'll be back arguing over that. I get that. I'm just noting to you, that's a different task in allocating that risk, in reducing allocations going forward. Because that slope, you may decide is different for direct deliveries versus all groundwater users, versus Ag, versus MNI. Those nuances are critical and some attention, some, some surgical precision needs to be applied to that rather than the blunt instrument that is currently contemplated in the ordinance. But setting the allocation for Caneo Creek and Santa Clara River water just sets the baseline for, the starting point for who gets potential access to how much groundwater. You may decide in year five, everybody's reduced by 20% or some are reduced by five, some are reduced by 10. That flexibility is built into the ordinance, but we'll have time to talk about that issue. There is no question that pumping has reduced for Pleasant County Valley Water District for Caneo Creek deliveries, because of Caneo Creek deliveries, and that they, that it is no different than any other program this board has approved in allowing for potential movement of water like the OAG system to benefit the basin. That, and there's no question that water is left behind. So the, the language that we proposed is a very simple addition to section, a new section 6.3 that ties together both the, the. 6.3 that ties together both the quantification of the Caneo Creek allocation to what was used during the base period and ties it to Resolution 2014-1, which sets all of the limits that Tony talked about, that guarantee it is a net benefit to the basin and sets limits on the amount of water that Camrosa can pump when it receives that allocation transfer from Pleasant Valley. When Pleasant Valley relaxes its pumping. I'll take a breath there. If there are no questions, I would point out one other issue that will just create confusion. Again, the reason that Pleasant Valley would just take a breath, a pause, to get this done. Director Bennett, you said, we've done it as best we can. I don't agree with you. I believe your staff is far more skilled than the community sitting behind me, and your board is far more skilled to spend a little bit more time to get this done in a way that won't trigger more conflict, and it won't take a lot of time. An example is, there are references to management areas and cross-basin transfers, and I mentioned to you at the beginning, PV operates in both Oxnard Plain Basin and Pleasant Valley Basin. We don't know, we can't interpret the way the language is in the ordinance, how and under what circumstances we may be able to shift our pumping from one basin to the other, or potentially from some unknown management area, one to the other. It is ambiguity that is a fundamental flaw in the ordinance that we'll take a little bit of time to correct, but it's not that difficult. If we got out of this mode of throwing staff in a room by themselves to draft language that nobody sees until three or four days before it's presented in this public setting, and we draft by committee in a public session, this is not the way to set groundwater policy for the next generation. We'd encourage you to take a pause, but at a minimum, if you're going to adopt this ordinance at the next reading with these substantial changes that you're proposing, it ought to include a new section 6.3 to respect the Caneo Creek water use that PV has put to use. Otherwise, you are telling 30% of the agricultural users in the basin that they are starting with 25% less groundwater access than every other agricultural user in the basin. Thank you.
So, may I ask you a question? Because we just received this, and so to me, when I, you know, just at first glance, and I apologize for oversimplifying things, but it doesn't seem like it would be a surprise that you reduced by 25% over this period, because the board, the GMA board required that of all users, right? The 25% reduction pumping from the 85, 89. So is that, a large part of the water you show here is groundwater? If you assume for a moment the yellow would have been groundwater, but for the pipe delivery. But is there a way to explain that as different than the required 25% reduction?
It is two pieces of it. Part of it is exactly that. And in fact, there seemed to be this, this general notion that agriculture hasn't done its part, that there is a meaningful segment of the agricultural community that could avoid the 25% reduction by stepping into the irrigation efficiency prior to emergency ordnancy. And PV didn't and couldn't avail itself of that. So it always reported on historic allocation, and so in fact, it did reduce 25% by a combination of reducing groundwater pumping and taking supplemental supplies. What is misleading about Kim's earlier graph is it only showed PV alone. It didn't show total water use within PV service area that reduced by that 25%. And some of it is, it could be distorted to some degree by, this is not necessarily a hydrologic cycle, true wet to dry. We didn't analyze it that way. We were just showing data from, from dry period to current, actually very dry conditions in, in 2014 to 2016. So maybe it is actually really representative of moving from one dry period to, to another.
Question for you, Rob?
Yeah.
Is it your contention then, that this graph that you presented us in your letter, that is for not just Pleasant Valley County Water District, but all agricultural operations within Pleasant Valley's service territory?
Correct. Both Pleasant Valley and all of its individual users, some of whom are 100% reliable on PV, and some of whom have some private wells that they supplement with PV water.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anybody else? So I guess the next directive to us is to, to, I give, give staff some direction with respect to going forward with the ordinance. Anyone wish to begin? Yeah, one's got a last slide there.
Sure. If, I want to point a couple of things out about, I think the most important, and try to do it really efficiently, and that is, you know, the cities are here saying, we shouldn't give credit for the Santa Clara River water, right? And that surface water transfer. And if that's what they're saying about Santa Clara River water, which was a direct, instead of put it in the ground, send it right to them, I'm sure they're saying that about Caneo Creek water. Because Caneo Creek water is much more like what the cities are doing, which is, the cities went out and imported state water, and the cities are saying, look, if you're going to give people credit for taking some surface water and not pumping, then the cities ought to get credit for taking state water. I'm certainly not ready to do that, because I see a distinction, a clear distinction between Santa Clara River water that was going to go into the aquifer, and we just short-circuited it, and Caneo Creek water and state water, which wasn't destined to go into the aquifer. And then on top of that, Caneo Creek water gave credits at the same time. I would just offer, what kind of conversation we'd be having right now if United would have gotten a credit for every acre foot of water that they delivered in the Santa Clara River pipeline? They'd be sitting on a huge number of credits, and these are different than the conservation credits. These would be hard credits, just like the Caneo Creek water's credits. We would, we would have a completely different conversation going on here. So in my mind, I really appreciate it, I don't want to disadvantage any farmers or anybody else, but in terms of trying to figure out what the right thing is to do, I think, in my mind, I disagree with the cities, there is a difference between Santa Clara River water and importing state water or importing Caneo Creek water. And that's why I would make that distinction, but only for the Santa Clara River water, the PTP, you know, pipeline stuff. The, the other thing is, with this, with this, I think the most critical issue in front of us, is all kinds of people decreased their pumping using all kinds of methods. Some people started conserving 20 years ago, 10 years ago. And they could come here and say, I decreased my pumping, I should get credit for that, because if I wouldn't have installed this kind of drip system or whatever, my pumping would have been higher, so give me that allocation. How do you unravel all of that? I think the only way you unravel that is with this one unique one, and that's the Santa Clara River. And outside of that, you don't give people that credit for, for that. The other thing I would point out is, we have the black and white copy, but I actually have a color copy of the chart that comes in the letter from Rob. And it shows the groundwater pumping of the Pleasant Valley Basin, and it was provided by the Pleasant Valley District to me. And yes, there's been a 25%, 24% reduction in total applied water, right? But the correlation between the Caneo Creek water and the actual groundwater pumping is certainly not clear to me. There was more pumping of groundwater between, between 12,000 and 15,000 in the 85 to 90 period. But in the 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, it was also between 12,000 and 15,000, 16,000. And it, and it varied up and down. In fact, in the two years, the three years before they got Caneo Creek water, they actually pumped less water than in the year that they first took Caneo Creek water. And so, you know, in answer to that question, did it reduce pumping? All kinds of people reduced pumping. I think that's a little bit like going down the rabbit hole of trying to go back and say, we should fix Port Wainimi's contract, and it's not doable in terms of doing this. I think we've come up with a reasonable solution, I think staff's come up with a reasonable solution with reasonable justification why Santa Clara River water ought to be treated differently, but not the other water. I wish it wasn't like that. I wish we didn't have this crisis. I wish we didn't have the problems that, that we have going forward, but that strikes me as the most appropriate way for us to go. I have some specifics about the ordinance, but I think sawing off on this issue of Caneo Creek water, it seems like the major issue, and then it's easier to deal with some of the minor things. Do we make this tweak with the language or that? That's, that's, that's the debate that I would like to engage in at this point in time, see where the board stands.
Okay, well, I'll jump on that bandwagon, and let's go continue talking about this Caneo Creek issue. Where I am with it at this point in time, yes, the project is a benefit. Yes, we need to, we definitely are better off in the basin for that water coming in. Yes, it is foreign water. And there can be a discussion in amongst MNI, if they wanted to go down that road, about in lieu water and whether they generate credits, but that's, we're not going to get into that here about this particular one in PV. After listening to everyone, a lot of my concerns have been addressed. And my primary concern was, is that A, we're not growing the pie. That if we've come up with an allocation amount, starting off at 105,000, and we can get Caneo Creek water in there at, in that 105,000, and particularly within the 54,000 type number that we're talking about for Ag, fantastic. Let them hammer it out. And let them discuss that, and, and go forward with it and work with it. My concern going forward is, and I'll have to refer to staff on this, is whereabouts does that put us in the long term with allocations in the Pleasant Valley Basin? And can that allocation be moved over to maybe the Oxnard portion of their wells? So that we don't exacerbate that problem in there. But I think I'm ahead of, we need to get more information from the consultant and DUDAC about what is sustainable yield in each basin, and if we're going to go down the road of management areas. So at this point in time, I would be in favor of PV getting the allocation that they're asking for, and that the program continue, and that, that credit be moved over to Camrosa on the other side of the river for eventual, be recorded as a liability in the basin.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about that? So I'm not sure where you see this as not growing the pie or growing the pie. I don't see any word in the ordinance where it makes it clear whether it is or not. And then what would you do about, what if Camrosa doesn't deliver? Do they have to pump? What if Camrosa delivers more? You know, all of that, you have that all worked out in your head? And they've worked that out for Santa Clara River, they have not worked that out for...
Right. So again, if it fits within the 54,000 that we are talking about going to Ag, and it becomes part of that groundwater mix that we are going to be allocating, then the pie is not growing. We are sticking to that 105,000 number that we've arrived at.
Well, we're, we're not creating groups. So we're not creating an MNI allocation, we're not sub-grouping, we're not creating an MNI and an Ag allocation, number one. And I guess the other question I have for you is, can they still transfer credits to Camrosa while, while we do this?
Yes. In my mind, yes.
I'm still thinking.
I appreciate Director Bennett's concepts of Santa Clara River water and its kind of distinctions, and how it might have gone into the ground, but, but that discussion, really in my mind, doesn't have any bearing about what we're trying to do here with the inclusion of Caneo Creek water. And that inclusion is the fact of setting that initial number, setting that starting point. And it's purely that. If it's not included, because it would have been water applied, it was, it was part of that total application of water, it's really how we, we've been thinking about how Santa Clara River water fits into that equation, because it was part of the total applied water. It needs to be included to give an accurate disposition of all those allocations. It doesn't grow the pie. It, whatever it does to that start number of the pie, we're still going to reduce to whatever our consultant tells us is that sustainable yield number. That ramp, that, that line on the graph may, may get steeper, but we still know we're going to have to get to that sustainable yield number. All it does is set a starting point that is equitable for all. And you're going to ask me, Director Bennett, if I think they ought to be able to transfer credits? I think the program ought to continue how it was initially conceptualized. It's a contract. We don't step into the middle of that now. We've seen from comments from Camrosa and others, that the project is a net benefit to the basin. It's not a net zero, as it's been portrayed by our staff. We know that it's been a net benefit. It's about equitable apportionment of that initial starting point.
Can I ask you a question to try to clarify? So should, should the cities get allocation for importing state water and not pumping as much also?
Let me jump back on that. I, as Crestview, was one that did that, and I totally understand this one. There are years that I will absolutely be able to show you that I shut off my wells and took state water and built conservation credits. Absolutely true. That was a management, business decision. That was actually a business decision that my company made in order to do that. And those, those credits are now gone. I would love to go back and rewrite the history books, but I don't think that's legitimate at this time to do that. If MNI, if Oxnard and Camrosa and Camario want to open that up within themselves in order to say that, and take a look at that, and redistribute how they go within their allocations, so be it. But I'm not willing to go back and second-guess a decision that I made 15 years ago to go ahead and import water, and that I should be made whole for it now.
What's, what's the difference? Camarillo imported state water and decreased their pumping. PV imported Caneo Creek water and decreased their pumping. One's going to get credit for decreasing their pumping, the other's not. Why? What's the distinction? One's actually even got another benefit, which is they got to give pumping credit away. The cities didn't get to give a pumping credit away. What's the distinction? Why would the cities not get the same credit for decreasing their pumping when they brought in state water? We got to be able to answer that question.
I think the answer's fairly simple. There's nothing that establishes that the city had the right to pump that water in the first place. And the Ag community did. So...
Why didn't the cities have a right to pump the water?
I didn't say they didn't. I said, there's nothing that establishes that the cities had that right. But there is plenty of law to establish that the Ag community had that right. That's the difference when we're setting groundwater policy here. And you know, it's not a question of, and it's, I think it's an artificial question to go back and revisit the history of imported water. You know, that's a fool's errand. We could, we could be on that forever to no end. I think the question's much narrower, and it relates to, you know, how do we deal with the fact that PV reduced groundwater pumping in order to bring in foreign water? And I think if we expand it beyond that, we're, we're creating artificial obstacles that we don't need to deal with.
I think if we expand it beyond that, or not expanding it beyond that, it's just creating an artificial distinction that, that conveniently limits the, limits the situation, but there's no logic. I mean, cities did have the right to pump groundwater, it's been well established over and over again. We got the Santa Clara River Basin as, when it was adjudicated, the city of Ventura got a tremendous right to pump water. It's still, they still argue about... It's still, they still argue about how much, but they certainly had the right. Cities had the right to pump water, and cities would have pumped more water if they couldn't get state water. I think if this body is, doesn't want to have the perception go out that this body is going to take two entities that did the exact same thing without any other distinctions and treat them differently, and MNI is not getting the same treatment that Ag is getting in this arrangement, and that would be inappropriate unless you can come up with another reason why you can justify this, right? I think.
Well, this is a whole new discussion, so...
I guess I'm the, well, it's up to you. You want to weigh in, but we're discussing the...
You're discussing the Canale Creek water and whether Pleasant Valley should get a credit for every, I mean, should be able to give Camrosa a credit.
Discussing whether they should get an increase in their allocation.
An increase in their allocation. Until we started talking about the cities importing water, as I said, I'm a slow thinker, and I'm not sure you want to go as slow as I am, which is, I'm not sure we can complete this whole discussion today, because this is just one little itty-bit, is what I've been sitting here thinking about. Until we started talking about the cities bringing in metropolitan water, I was thinking, yes, Pleasant Valley should get credit or...
Allocation.
An allocation for the Canale Creek water. I keep wanting to say Cayegas, and it's the wrong creek. They've been using that water all along. So I really, I do think that's... On this one, I do think they should get the, it should be counted in their base allocation. Steve has thrown this, should cities get credit for the water they buy? I don't know about that one. But I don't know that we've been talking about that either. That's something one person brought up. So if other people are interested in that, I'll weigh in on that, but I've got to give that more thought. That isn't something I've been thinking about for the last five, six months.
Well, I think the issue's probably, I think we know where the issue's going to go, so just leave it. The cities have requested that if you're going to give this credit to everybody else, the city should get...
Well, one city requested.
Right. Well, I think the representatives of the, speaking, I think Councilmember Ramirez was speaking on behalf of the cities. The other...
All the cities.
...were not here. And I see Kevin Brown back there, and I'm sure Kevin Brown would say the city of Ventura would like to get credit for decreasing their pumping. There's a thumbs up. So I think that's where the, I think that you'd find that's where the cities are on...
I hear a lot of people wanting a lot of water.
Sure.
For a lot of reasons.
And it's a lot easier, it's a lot easier to say yes than it is to say no, you know, at this point in time, but at some point in time, we have to say no, or else we're going to be constantly in this situation. Thank you.
And you're all night.
And tomorrow.
Thank you.
On the way in, somebody asked me to please get us out of here by Thanksgiving, so...
The, let me, again, I want to try to jump into this and propose an addition to Article Six to add, I think as Rob mentioned, 6.3, indicate that PV's extraction allocation should be adjusted to include its average annual use of water from the Canale Creek Project during the base period, subject to the conditions in Resolution 2014-01. That would be my motion to amend that. Yes?
Quick clarification. So in the meeting today, you heard one landowner, he would say, some of that should be mine. You've heard PV say, but it's everybody. Do we distribute that over everybody, or is it just going to be...
Goes to the extractor.
Yeah, I mean, the same way it would, the same way it would, I guess whoever it is that's receiving the Canale Creek water and not pumping it gets the allowance, gets the extraction allowance.
So it becomes very complicated that all the water gets mixed. It's like trying to chase...
Well, it's the same question as the Santa Clara River, right? Anything received by the pipeline.
So we just assume, I guess we have to work with them. I don't know who the blue pumpers are on here, but I guess the green pumping is them and the blue pumpers in the charade. But you're here, some concern about that, and I just want to make sure the board is your answer.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Could you read that again?
I have a question for you about your motion, and that is, your motion doesn't deal with all the things in 6.2.1 about when diversions of surface water from the Santa Clara River are available for PTP. Seems like...
It doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with 6.2.
But what, what do you do with, do we say that they have to take the water when it's available? Do we say they have to cut back their, you know, that's what we're doing with, people are taking Santa Clara River water, we're saying if it's available, you can't pump. We're not saying that if we just add your language there.
I mean, I have no problem with that. Didn't include that.
But it seems like that language...
Seems like it should be.
I mean, I have no problem with requiring PV to take the water from the Canale Creek Project when it's available, as long as their pumping allocation includes...
And decreases their pumping allocation by that measure of...
Yes.
So County Council, is there a way that we can capture that so that this can be the first read this evening?
There is, but I'm not sure I have that language.
See, for example, at the end of 6.2.1, the last sentence says, "This volume will be deducted from United and Pleasant Valley's extraction allocation for the reporting year." You know, I mean, those kinds of things. Pleasant Valley shall use PV deliveries when available before extracting groundwater. It seems like all of those precautions need to be in there about Canale Creek water also. Unless there's some kind of intent that you could write in, County Council, and then when we go down...
No, I think it should be in there, the same as the other.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
I don't have a problem with it either. It is in there in a general sense already, is there not?
Well, no, because that refers to Santa Clara River. I wouldn't mind, I don't mind at all co-opting some of that for this purpose as well.
6.2 could include Canale Creek Project water.
Mr. Chair, Board, Mr. Matthews pointed out that it's in the resolution, they have to take it, the water when it's available, but what's not in the resolution is...
They have to decrease their pumping.
...how much Camrosa has to deliver, so that's the piece that I think is...
Well, it's also, it's also not in the resolution that when they take it, they have to decrease their pumping allocation.
It has nothing to do with decreasing pumping allocation.
That has to get put into our...
Right. And there's no connection with the resolution reporting about the other customers on the PV system that they've included in the chart.
Well, just because it's in their resolution doesn't mean we can't include it in our ordinance.
Sure.
Sure.
They were trying to find a way to just speed us along, but even if we counted on that ordinance, it's still, we still have to put in the language. I'm just asking County Council out loud, I mean, is it possible, just like 6.2.1, you say where diversions of surface water from Santa Clara River or Canale Creek water are available, then, but it says United or PV, or, yeah, in any year in which actual PV deliveries are less than historical.
No, I think you'd have to rewrite a version of 6.2.1 specifically for 6.3, is I think would have to be done. I don't think you can just...
Well, I think you have to do it for not just 6.2.1, you'd have to do it for 0.3, 0.4, because see, in any year in which actual PTP deliveries are less than historical, see how 6.2.4 reads. So you'd have to do the same thing for Camrosa, wouldn't you?
So with my notes, I think we understand the board's intent, and we can come back with some hours to accomplish some of that.
And I'm fine with that. If County Council says, can we do that and still adopt on December 5th? We don't have to have two reads, right?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Well, then you don't have to do, I thought we...
You just outline your intent very carefully here.
I can send you an email with the exact language if you want.
It's got to be...
Read my notes.
It's got to be here.
The idea is that we will include it.
Will include it. Basically, we want to capture the delta between what they receive and what their, I guess the average annual use during the base period is.
We'll spread it around on the users that are included, and this is the important question I'm not clear on.
Well, the spreading it around part is, your receiver is PV.
Just want to be clear, it's not so...
And then your PV reporting is going to show that.
And my water's included in that 25% reduction and...
No, goes to PV.
No, goes to PV.
Goes to...
PV's wells get it? That's right. It's the 13, I think it was the 13 job, wells and give it. Your unit says now that it's the well for this PV. Well, yeah, your chart shows others... It shows everybody. Yeah, the chart's empty. I'm just trying to interpret what you guys have come to accomplish, so we haven't had a chance to discuss this. So I just want to make sure that we understand it, so it's get dialed in, so it goes to PV's 11 wells or PV, nobody else.
And they have, and they have to cut back their pumping, just like people taking the Santa Clara River water, just like...
They have to cut back, now what about...
Cut back equal to the amount they get from the Canale Creek Project.
Right. And then the credits that accrue to, no, will there be any more credit transfers?
Yeah, that doesn't change resolution.
Doesn't change their content.
Doesn't change GMA 20, was it 2014-01?
So there'll still be credit that goes over to Murphy's Water, 90 foot water, goes to...
So their allocation's going to go up, and Camrosa can continue to pump...
In a different area.
In a different area.
It's the same basin.
It's the same water, it's just moved.
Yeah, it's just moved.
Yeah.
But it's a basin, it's taking that pumping.
Exactly right.
Just to make sure we understand.
I want to make sure, so they take 5,000 acre feet, right?
They can only move 4,500.
Okay, so they take 3,000 acre feet, all right? So they take 3,000 acre feet, all right? Their allocation has been increased, right, by, let's say it's 3,000. Okay, so they take 3,000 acre feet. Now, we've said you can pump 3,000 more. They take the Canale Creek water, they don't get it. But when they take that Canale Creek water, they don't pump it, but Camrosa's going to pump it.
Yes.
Now, I would offer to you, that feels like a double draw in that they have the ability, that water should have been resting so that, because the whole reason behind the credit is you rest the water so that in bad times, you can take it. But now, in bad times, when they don't get Canale Creek water, they're going to get to take 3,000 acre feet. That's a double draw on that water, but I'm losing, and so...
So, and I, and that's what we're going to do. So, and there was one last question, and that's for Director Ranio. I'll have Kim get up here, but 105 was after we added the... Yeah, now we're going to whatever, I don't know what this number is, but it's going to be 105 plus.
You're taking it to 110.
Saying that to Director Borcher, let's just make...
Oh.
That's...
So I just want to make...
Yeah, good, yeah, because that's not what Director Ranio said. He wouldn't support it if it was going to be that.
I don't know how, so I, maybe I misunderstood, I don't know how else we get that.
Just reallocate what's remaining.
So, maybe Kim...
It's going to take it from, if you take it, you reallocate it, and don't, if you keep it at 105, then everybody, MNI and everybody's going to take less, all right? Correct? It's an equitable... Then what's going to happen?
Now, to me, to me, the change, I know we don't have pools. Right, we don't have pools.
So how do you do it?
We don't have pools. It's part of the 54.
How do you do it?
Part of the 54,000.
How do you do that with this ordinance?
It's, what, seven, seven and a half percent of the 54,000 goes to the...
Maybe if I walk into this, I'll understand. So we take the applications that we have in the 2000 portion to that period.
Yep.
And so we know what everybody has, some number that we've got to, then we add to the water from Santa Clara River, and then we add to that the river, the water from, I just, that's the way we did it, and we're just going to follow that.
That's, that's not the direction that Director Ranio said. He said he wants to keep it at, he wants, does not want to increase the size of the pie. He wants so...
Yeah.
So you have to, you have to cut the pie differently.
And that's why I said I could go along with it, because we weren't going to add to the size of the pie. So you explain it, Director Ranio.
So we have 54,000 acre feet approximately, that's going to be in the Ag's allocation based upon the 2005 through 2014. Am I mistaken on that number?
We're going to have to go back to a presentation.
I think it's 54,000 there, and there's 36 on the MNI side.
You know, I think I have this slide.
Okay, there we go, 54,000 and, oh, thank you, 54,015. This 4,500 is encapsulated in that. It doesn't grow the pie.
You just deduct it from the pie.
You put it inside that portion of the pie.
I guess I'm having a mental block on that as well.
How can you do that if we aren't separating, we're not dividing the pie and saying, Ag guys divide the pie differently than MNI people. We're saying all extractors divide the pie equally.
We're letting actually each party divide or figure out how they're going to do it. MNI is going, has already said that they're going to divide their pie based upon the T.
But what MNI decides to do outside of us, what we're going to do is we're saying every extractor is going to get their average over that 10-year period.
Right.
Whether they decide to pool that together or not, that's up to them. You're trying to pool this together, but we don't have a mechanism in this ordinance to do that. We don't have an Ag pie in this ordinance to add the 4,500 to. You can't do that. Now, you can divide it differently. You can just say, we're going to take the allocations for everybody, and we're going to decrease MNI's allocation and all the other Ag allocations by enough to squeeze 4,500 more into an increased allocation for PV. That's the only way you can do it and still stay at 105.
Looking at this chart, it goes from 54...
Can I just, once, because is that true? If, the only way you could do this is if, to stay at 105, you've got to decrease everybody by a certain amount.
That's, so if I'm understanding your conversation, that is correct.
See, that's not going to, that's not, then that violates a 60-40 split.
Exactly.
Well, and if you add the blue in, you've really violated it. It's more like 70-30. And the blue is what we're talking about.
I don't want to grow the pie.
Okay.
I don't want to violate the 60-40. Make it work.
We've got about...
Make it rain.
Make that happen.
Mechanical process, and we don't need to discuss it during this meeting, but I think, I think the, I don't think it's that difficult to do. I think it's just a function of math.
And that average Canale Creek water during that period was 5,495 acres.
All right, so the direction, you're...
I thought they couldn't go over 4,500.
That's just most of Camrosa could ever pump.
Oh.
So is the majority of the board of the opinion that we should not change the 105,751 number? Everybody says so. Bang that, that part's fine. So we're not going to change that number, right?
Right.
Majority of the board is saying, if you can keep that number the same and find a way, this is not what I'm saying, this is the majority of the board, and find a way to give PV credit for Canale Creek water, do it, but I think you're also saying that don't cut, don't cut MNI, don't cut MNI, only cut Ag.
Keep the 60-40.
And if that can't be done...
Then we don't do it.
Like the staff do.
Come back to us and explain that.
It's a new man.
Because I think it can't be done. I think it can be done, it can be done fairly simply.
How?
You got an idea?
Sure, yeah. So if you've got 54,000 acre feet, if that's, that's what you anticipate that the Ag pumping is, you simply net out the, well, if you... that the Ag pumping is, you simply net out the, well, if you have the 54,000 acre feet and you were to assign that to all of the various pumpers. So then just simply net out from that gross, the average of, of pumping, and then reallocate at, whether it's 98%, 94%, 93%, and you'd get to the correct number.
Would, would you have to make a distinction between Ag and MNI to do that?
Yeah, since if you look at this graph, for example, the green bar is only Ag.
Yeah, I realize that. But is there any place in this ordinance where we make a distinction between Ag and MNI? And can we legally make a distinction between Ag and MNI? I mean, that was the whole, one of the whole points was, don't make the distinction. You've got all kinds of legal problems if you start saying, well, we're going to treat Ag people different than we're going to treat MNI people. We're treating all extractors the same, which is part of why we like the simplicity of this arrangement.
Right.
So the simplicity of this arrangement was, we're not doing MNI and Ag and opening ourselves up to that allocation. So how do you, how do you do that?
I, I think it's no different than the way you would do it if you were in a, in a variance process and the, a pumper, or in this case PV, came in and said, here's my case for a variance to the amount, to, to the extent of 4,000 or 5,000 acre feet this, they make their case, you agree. Then how do you go ahead and, and apply the variance? You do, no different in this context.
So, okay, if we did that in the variance and we said, you know what we're going to do? Even though we're treating every, all the extractors the same, what we've decided is, in the variance process, we're going to give this person their extra 2,000, but we're going to take it only from the Ag people. How could you, how could you justify that? If your ordinance doesn't have any distinction between them? I think this is not a first reading.
That's what I think.
I'm sorry.
I think this is not a first reading. We need to get this reworked right.
Well, we figured that out.
I think one of the questions I'd ask, I, I, I don't see how you get there and keep it 105 and not cut MNI.
So, I think I have a way, I think I understood the math, if I can ask a question? Yeah, so if we take the 54, let's just say it's 6,000. So then we've got a total for Ag of 60,000. And we, we take that 6,000 and add it to the PV wells. And then everybody's well number that they had in that base period is over 60,000, not over 54,000.
Right.
We can do that. Now, I understand the math, right?
You can do that without making a distinction between...
I have no idea on that, that part. I just wanted to make sure I understood the math, so when you...
Sure, that's the math. Legally, can we make a distinction between Ag and other wells?
We can. That, that was the original version of this ordinance that staff brought to your board, but the discussion on that led away from making that distinction. But if you wanted to go back to making it, you could do that.
So you're saying that we can do that?
We, we can, yes.
Okay.
So it looks like the staff's going to come back with another version of this next meeting. Why don't we give them direction with some, with respect to some of the other smaller items that we discussed? Also, in Article 6, there is the suggestion that we, in 6.2.2 and 6.2.4, change the word actual to available. That makes sense?
I guess I didn't understand the reason for the request. I mean...
And the difference is if there's, if there's water available...
That wasn't delivered.
You don't want to take it.
Okay.
Okay, then there's, so, now, I think Tony mentioned what available means. That may be something you have to work out in the definitions. But...
That's why I think it's easier for actual.
It's easier to do, that's for sure. It's true.
Could I ask Tony to come back up and explain why, what the distinction was, yeah, between, between actual and available? I got it at the time that you said it, but not so much it's happened. Why should we switch to available instead of actual?
Because it, it just ensures that they take the water when it is available. It ensures that it's put to use.
So...
But I have discussed this one.
They could not take the water even though it's available. They could decide not to take it and then...
They could. And I can't imagine what those would be, but there could be circumstances that...
Just make sure that they do.
Let's say there's some little critters in the water they don't want to have.
Do what?
Let's say there's some little critters in the water they don't want to have.
Oh, no, and we've had that discussion with, with Ag, and I think that's why there's going to be some work done on the definition of available. If it's, if the, if it's too tur, the turbidity's too high coming down the creek and United doesn't want to take it, well, that water's not available. If there's muscles in it, well, that's something that the group's going to have to define what available is.
But on the other hand, you, this would give us greater certainty that people, because people say if it's available and I don't take it, I decrease my ability to pump. So that would give them an incentive to be sure to take it.
6.2.2. 6.2.3.
No, four. Oh, but three also, right?
Two, three, and four, you're right.
And five. Well, some of them are...
Greater, so...
You can change it to measure. I mean, I think what you're trying to attach, I think I'm wanting to leave some, I mean, it's kind of... So, neither word needs to be there for deliveries, because that's just three words in some division.
Well, I think the, I think the point that was attractive is the language that essentially requires a user to take water when it's available. Or, as opposed to, you know, counting deliveries is one thing unless you get into a circumstance where there's available water that somebody elects not to, not to accept or not to receive so that they can pump. And that's what we were hoping to avoid.
So now 7.2 and 7.3?
Yeah, yeah. And if I follow the discussion, it sounded as if if we moved 7.2.5 down to become 7.3.4 and changed or added to the language in 7.3 Ag, so it read municipal and industrial and agricultural use, then having done that, you could update 7.2 and 7.4 because it would be redundant.
Mr. Chair, we're not sure, staff's not sure how we will collect the information of what's being used on Ag land to move to an Ag allocation necessarily if that's done. Now, I understand there's, it gets into this disagreement of whether it's the district's water or the mutual water company's water, and you heard you know, a comment that it is, I can't remember who made that comment, but that it's, it's their, their district's water. And, and then you've heard other folks make comments in terms of Pleasant Valley, which is also a special district, that they believe that water coming is their water. And so if we start making that distinction, then we're eliminating that information that could be used down the road to figure out how to transition to a land-based allocation.
Why don't we just leave this part as it is?
My suggestion to the board is staff's probably done a pretty comprehensive job. It might be redundant, but I think we should.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wasn't the intent to track down information to move to a land-based allocation system, and that was the way to do it?
I suggest we just leave these as they are.
I have 10.1, the word all.
I agree. I think that's...
I got that, so that's the last, the first line, the last word.
10.1.
10.1, the first line, the last word of the first line, the word all. There you go. Could I ask County Council, we asked you to look at making a reference to transfers by the approval of the executive director, okay for intra, just intra-district, but not inter-district?
Basin.
Were you able to, he was going to craft the language to, to clarify that. Were you able to do that, County Council?
I, I, I don't have it at the moment, no.
But, but that's the board's intention, right? That's all we have to...
Well, we did talk about juxtaposition of PV and Oxnard basins and how that transfer might be a good thing.
But I thought that...
That would be an inter-basin transfer.
I thought Director Craven said, but if, if in those unusual situations, just have that come to the board.
Well, I just asked if it was.
Wouldn't be prohibited.
Yeah, wouldn't be prohibitive. You, you still want to have the executive director being able to do that blanket for all kinds of intra, inter-district transfers, right?
No, and perhaps I missed it, but going back to Article A, we talked about the allocationaryovers. The change that, that I discussed with Jurgen about the first water in the succeeding year being the banked water from the prior year, I guess that's changed. And I, I, I don't remember why.
Well, I think the reason why that was is because then it, it really isn't a five-year
Yeah, that, that occurs.
Cap on there. And that, that was what we understood your board's intention was, to limit it to five years. And then if it just keep, you just keep rolling first in, first out, then it's, it can be carried forward. That's fine if that's what your board agrees with it, but I think that's what would be the reality of, of that language. Is that we carry it further forward.
I'm in, all in favor of the cap on what you can accumulate. But I'm not so sure that we need to have what expire, particularly if we're using the, the, you know, first in, first out methodology. Because at that point, you don't really have an accounting problem. And, and you don't have the problem of something going, of anything going on endlessly. I didn't use it this year, I use it next year. And, and it's not more complicated than that on an ongoing basis.
That, that's why, I think the water market complication, I, I don't see that since the water market, I think, has continued to be envisioned in annual water market. So whether it's a, a crude allocation that expires this year or next year, the water market is for this year. So I, I think that's not an issue. But regardless of that, if, if that's your board's desire to, to put that language back in there, recognizing that that does change the expiration effect, then that's fine.
And that's the one, I mean, the expiration of saved water is, is sort of been a sensitive issue among the people that I've spoken to. Because if they, you know, if they worked to save it and were fortunate enough not to need it in the next few years, they didn't want to have to lose it. And by, by using that, that first-in, first-out system, they wouldn't lose it, and they'd still be incentivized to save it.
I, I agree with the five-year expiration.
Well, think about what Chair West is saying, and I've heard this too from Ag folks. It solves both questions. There is an expiration. It's used immediately. But it's not somehow limited, you know, in, in, in a, in a finite period, and then it goes away entirely. And so we require in its use immediately, right up front. And it's going to get solved really quickly as these allocations get ramped down. There's going to be very little of that happening, and anything that does is probably going to be due to rainfall. And it's going to be a dry period following that rainfall, and it's going to get expired out, zeroed out within a year or two.
Yes, I guess it's a problem we could hope to have, right?
That's when everybody wants to use them.
So to me, it, it answers both questions. It, it, it puts an expiration, but it doesn't tie Ag's hands into a, into a finite box.
I'm okay with first in, first out, especially given the slope.
But there's still a cap?
For those of us...
Right, right.
For those of us that lived through the periods where we had hundreds of thousands of acres feet of credits and, and the ridiculousness of it and the complications that it caused, I'm concerned. But at the same time, you, 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 you do have to hope that the ramp down is going to lead to the fact that there shouldn't be a lot, but if...
We're talking about 100% of your allocation.
And that's it. We put a cap on everyone.
I've always been cautious about about this whole issue of credits, because it's, it's easy to have unintended consequences with credits, and so...
And realistically understand
what is there?
The prospect of somebody accumulating 100% of their allocation in one year is not going to happen.
It doesn't say one year. If we take away the five years, and you had several years of rain...
They're never going to get higher than 100%, and they're going to be using it immediately the next year. You don't have this credit issue.
But that means that they...
They build up at the end of the...
You'll, you'll never, you'll never, you'll never get to five years, because as soon as you build up a credit, then you...
You're using it the next year.
You're using that, but...
And the amount that you accumulate is going to be going down because your allocation's going down.
So, yeah, but you're adding on to the end. That's why you probably won't get to five years.
So the credits will actually be taken care of themselves and be phased out.
Right.
Okay. So that only leaves one question, Mr. Chairman.
We're getting rid of the five-year expiration, but we're keeping the cap on 100%.
Yes. Wait a sec, I missed that part. We're getting rid of the five-year? I thought we were keeping the five-year and just having the first in, first out.
You are. You're keeping, you're keeping five years, but you're doing first in, first out.
We're keeping the five years?
It's just you're effective, you're effectively...
There is no five years.
You're going to effectively end. The only way you get to five years is if somebody doesn't use...
No, if you use no water the next four years.
Yeah, if they don't use anything, then...
But then they'll exceed their 100%.
And the most that they get is 100%, yeah.
No, it means that after five years, that first water used is that credit.
No. The first water used in year two is the water you banked in year one.
It's first in, first...
Basically, it's the first, you know, so you bank, you banked 1,000 acre feet of water. You, you pump, let's say you pumped...
I, yeah, okay. I, I thought it was the first water used after year five, but I could, I could be, but if that's how you want to have it, and I don't recall for sure.
No, the first water pumped in year two is what you saved in year one. Now, you get to the end of year two, maybe you've saved the same amount as you did the year before, maybe less. But whatever you have saved off the end of year two is the first water you pump in year three.
Okay.
So you don't need a five-year, because you're never going to get out there unless, as Steve said, somebody saved water in year one and pumped nothing for the next four years.
But this is a huge change in the way we're doing this, just, just so we know. I mean, essentially, you, you, most people will end up, at some point, I'm getting ahead, and, and I'm just saying, we need, we need to make sure, you need to make sure you're comfortable with this.
There's still the cap. There's still the cap. So if you had a couple of years in a row where they, people were able to pump only 50% of their allocation, they'd never be able to, to accumulate.
Well, let's just look at what we're telling, what we're doing by doing that. They automate, then in a drought year, if they had saved up 100%, they could use 200% in one year.
No, first of all, it's never going to happen.
Well, I'm just talking theoretically here.
Okay, but...
And that's...
Well, they could use 200%.
Theoretically, I would say, yeah, that's, that's...
They could use 200%.
Without penalty.
Yes.
Right.
They've saved 100%, and then they have whatever that allocation is for that year. So, yes.
Right, and over the two-year average, it would be the same amount pumping.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So what was the other item?
Fine, true up on service water.
I thought we were going to deal with that in the context of the ramp down.
Fine.
Is that...
Works for me.
Just be sure to bring...
County Council said we want to make sure we did it. Do, do we need to do anything more? Do we need to recognize that there's, that, that we're going to reconsider the true up, a true up period for service water in the ordinance itself?
I would recommend including language in the ordinance.
So how about just directing them to include language that says we're going to...
We intend to do that in the future.
Yeah, exactly.
And there are a lot of changes, and there were some in here I hadn't caught that had been omitted. And the changes weren't, the direction wasn't in the minutes. Could we get a red line copy?
You sure can.
I, I really have a hard time when I don't...
Agreed.
When it's not spelled out to me what's taken out and what's added. Thank you.
I think those are all of...
Oh, that's good.
That's all the direction that we have time for tonight.
Well, what about things people ask for after that?
I don't think there were any that I had in my notes.
Okay.
All the direction staff can stomach in one evening. That's... You want anything else?
I'm still going through my notes. Okay, I think we got it all.
So, Mr. Chair, board members, so I'm just looking at the calendar. And so the next meeting's the 5th. We have Thanksgiving here, um, and so, we generally, you know, we want to get the board packet out into print here, so you have it over the weekend to look at for the 5th. So, that's really, that gives us really about three days to put all this together, so I just wanted to call that out, because we're stacked up between the two meetings.
Well, you only have-
I pointed out last meeting, you guys have like 75 people back there that do nothing except write something.
Well, you're supposed to look behind the door.
Out, outs, outs, I mean, we, outside of one issue, outside of one issue, which is the Cano Creek one, everything else is pretty clean language that we've given you.
Yeah.
And I think you, you're either going to get the Cano Creek thing, you're either going to find a way to do it or you're not, and, and, but I think we should stay on track for adopting this December 5th, if we can, right?
Okay.
Well-
And if that's too problematic, you'll have to let us know. I mean, I certainly understand the constraints and-
We, we'll, um, I just want to make sure, uh, are you around? Okay. Push it back.
Keely promised to cook for everybody. Okay.
She does bake.
What's that?
She's a great baker.
Oh, wow, okay. So, I guess that concludes item 6, since we're not going to do a first reading or schedule a-
We do need to vote on this.
Do we? We just give directions?
I'm not in support of, of-
No, we just gave direction to staff to return with a revised ordinance. I don't think we need to vote on anything, do we?
I'm, I'm not in support of some of the things we gave direction on, so I guess if the, I don't want to have the implication is that it was unanimous support, so I'm, I'm fine just saying that, that's fine.
Alright, no, I think that was clear, but-
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, I, yeah.
I'm going to see the wording on the one.
Right, I think we all do. Alright, moving on, we have an executive officer's report.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
With wishes for a happy Thanksgiving for everyone, we adjourn.
No closed session?
No.
No.
Don't ever say that.
Oh, just a place we'll consider it, yeah.